Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. The time being seven o'clock. I'm going to formally open tonight's January 24th of 2019 school committee meeting. First order of business is our meeting minutes from January the 10th. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the minutes from the meeting of January the 10th as presented.
Motion's been made. Do I have a second?
Second? No, go ahead. Marrow will.
Motion's been made and I have a second. Do I have any discussion on the minutes? Hearing no discussion, no questions, no comments. All in favor? Motion passes five zero. Thank you. Chairperson's report. I don't have a lot, other than to say it's a busy time of year for everyone. And I do want to thank the people who have given of their time to come out tonight on a rainy, very wet evening. It is not fit for man nor beast out there tonight. So, thank you for coming out and sharing the evening with us. There has been a number of members of the community who have reached out to me with some concerns, particularly around our tightening of our meeting format. And I want the members of the community to know that we have heard those concerns. And we do have one agenda item that I know most of you are here to both get updated on and possibly chime in on. And that is agenda item number six, the Green Meadow air quality update. And I wanted to let the member, or the community members in the room know that we will be relaxing our public comment policy during that particular item after Mr. McClosko has a chance to summarize all of the things that he needs to summarize, so that people can have their concerns alleviated and not have to wait until the end of the meeting to address the board at large. So, I just wanted to let people know that that's our intent going into it tonight. But for most, but for the other agenda items, we will be sticking to our policy, which is citizen comments towards the end of the meeting tonight. So, that being said, I don't have a whole lot else for the chairperson's report. So, Dr. Girardi, what do you have for your superintendent's report?
Bob, just before you start, I just wanted to mention, because I think this will be obviously an item of concern, but there's documents in the back on the librarian's desk, which summarizes what Mr. McClosko will speak about. So, if anyone didn't grab a copy, please do.
Thanks for pointing that out, Dawn.
Okay. So, in the superintendent's report, I've been reading emails, redacted emails, just because we've been getting a lot of positive emails. So, I wanted to share one more with you tonight. Our Fowler Special Education Department Chair forwarded this email from last week. The email says, "Hi, Chris. We received a Save the Date letter for our son's annual IEP on Wednesday." Well, on the date. That date and time worked for my husband and I. We would like certain staff to be invited. We also wanted to let you know that we got to speak to the teacher. The part that was really nice was my husband and I, where is it? Finally, we shared the revised Save the Date letter with CPAC and the board members. We were all very happy with changes to the form letter to make it more parent-friendly and highlight the importance of parents as critical members of the IEP team. We really appreciate the willingness of the special ed department to incorporate changes suggested by the CPAC. So, just wanted to share that with you, that we received that email and that that's been taking place. But what I really want to talk about tonight, and it kind of lends into some of our topics tonight, I attended the Massachusetts Association of Schools Superintendent's Winter Meeting and was extremely encouraged, both in the financial and academic areas of public schools. So, yesterday, the governor unveiled a proposal to significantly increase Chapter 70 funding for this year and to fully fund the Foundation Review Budget Commission recommendations. That was exciting. That was reported on at this meeting. But what I was most excited about was the commissioner's remarks to work collaboratively with administrators and teachers to improve the education of the whole child. We'll learn more about the commissioner's plan at his unveiling on March 19th, when he shares his vision with our state. But what's really most exciting is the commissioner's new vision aligns nicely with Maynard's strategic planning and core values, that Maynard is a creative, curious, kind, empathetic, safe, and healthy community. This is just another example of Maynard leading the state and leading the nation on social, emotional learning and on the whole child. So, I was really pleased to see the commissioner going in that direction. And that's the end of my report for tonight.
Questions for Dr. Girardi? Okay. All right. Moving on. Student rep's report. Hi, Pat. Hi, AJ. Oh, they're going to the microphone. Awesome.
Hello, Ken. Yeah. So, on Saturday, six students from MHS will be embarking to all-state music auditions at a junior high school, some vocally, some instrumentally. So, lots of nerves, a little of them, but wishing.
Them luck. They'll all do really good. And then, just a reminder that Pops Night is on February 1st in the MHS auditorium, if you want to listen to some music. Something that happened yesterday, was it? That was yesterday, right?
Yes.
Yes. Middlesex County DA Marion Ryan came in, and I know Dr. Girardi was there, and I don't know if anyone else was there. She gave a nice speech about the dangers of vaping and then information on internet safety and staying protected on the web.
I will say, as an update from National Honor Society, we've been more so stagnant for the past few months. But now, we're starting to collaborate for our entire group service project, which is looking like we're going to be helping to improve different areas in town, different public buildings. I know I've already talked with Mr. Costello about here. And then, my father, I've talked about with the police station, and we're also doing like fire stations, stuff like that, the high school. So, I'm looking forward to seeing what we're able to do. And I'll have more information on what we're actually doing for each of those buildings once we get all the requests in from each area.
Also, tomorrow at 5:30, the girls varsity basketball game will be playing Murdoch at the MHS gym, and boys varsity will be traveling to Murdoch to play against them.
Yeah, I know that's a big game for them. It's gonna be, I've heard from players on the team that it's gonna be more so of a challenging one, but they're looking forward to it. And I will say, now, midterms have finally come to a close. The first semester has wrapped up. And now, we found out, or we've been finding out over the past few days in our senior project, that we are gonna carry on with more so the actual applications of what we're doing. So, the internship. I know a few of you go to the actual presentation of the senior projects and the trifold presentations, and looking forward to see what's gonna come out of that. And I will say, as a last thing, I know, Mr. Hamm, you wanted me to kind of update you on this. A few people have gotten into colleges so far. I believe it was two days ago, Zoe Sofferman got accepted to Franklin Pierce College. She's going to be playing soccer there. So, she had a little ceremony yesterday, or Tuesday in the auditorium. And I personally got into my pick of URI, so I'm also right there. People are still waiting on, a lot of the early action has come through. Now, we're waiting on more of the normal decision, which would come around like late February, early March. So, I'll keep you guys updated. I know you've known that Charlie Newhauser got into Harvard. Others like Elizabeth Medei, who was your other attendee for the luncheon, got into her top pick of Pittsburgh. So, she'll be going there. She'll most likely be going there. I haven't heard any final decision. But yeah, a lot of people getting into college now. It's really looking good for everyone.
Fantastic.
I would just add, and there's another student that Principal Carrachias mentioned, who had her choice of three different art schools that she wanted to go to, and all of them came through.
That's awesome.
So, it really shows that our curriculum is very varied and kids are getting to where they want to be, which is really exciting.
That's fantastic. Yeah. That's great.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Do we have a date for senior projects? I know it's not for a while.
Not, I can't say a certain date.
That's okay.
It usually, last year, it fell like right after one of my AP tests, which was on May 11th, I want to say. So, it's some, usually the second week of May, I would say.
Sounds good. Yeah, it's a fun time.
Do you mind just giving an example? Because some people may not be aware of senior project. It's also just me can hear, but it's so different for other students. It'd be nice if I could share.
So, yeah, there are certain, so senior project, what, for the first term, we spent researching a topic and we wrote a paper about it. And now, we're actually creating a project based off of that. For example, last year, I know one of my friends created an animation to show a certain type of protein, how it worked. Mrs. Kate Hogan, right here, I know, came in for one of Kat Morgan's presentation about the political science field. I know a few others who, Garvey Cummings did a glow-in-the-dark walkathon to help raise money for concussion awareness. So, it's really a way for students to show their creativity about their topic. I personally am working out the details right now, but I think I know what I want to do. I won't say anything now, just so I don't jinx myself later about it. But really looking forward to this next semester of being able to work on that.
Well, and then, some of the students also kind of do a pilot of maybe a career that they're thinking about, that they're interested in. I've heard it goes both ways, that sometimes they decide they even are more passionate about the direction that they're going, and sometimes they say, "Yeah, I think I'm gonna change direction."
So, yeah, some students, like I know one of the students, yeah, one of the students, Julia Connor, did her project on renewable energy, but she's kind of changed course since then. She's kind of seeing like, maybe this isn't completely what I want to do, but she wants to go into another, I believe it's something to do with law. But she's been able to kind of figure that out, and she did it earlier too, which was good for her. So, that, it's a way for students to definitely find what they're passionate about. Like, I know I'm definitely passionate about my topic. So, looking forward to see what students are able to actually do with that.
Excellent. And also, for the audience, for the presentations that they do in May, a number of us have done them for numerous years, but they're always looking for people to actually come and see the presentations and just kind of give guidance to the students and that. And the other piece that they're always looking for is for people that are in companies that possibly the students can job-share. They don't call it interning. I think they call it job-share now, but they're constantly looking for other places.
I think it's job-shadowing.
Job-shadow?
Job-shadowing. Yeah, that's right. Job-sharing would not be, thank you. Job-shadowing. But it could turn into a job-share. Anyway.
That's a component of a lot of, whereas they're trying to match, because that students have this best day, can.
I'm working with one of the school employees, actually, tomorrow for my job-shadow. So, I'm gonna be out there.
Fantastic.
Excellent. Thank you.
Any other questions?
The presentations, if you, the chats, it's just really.
Amazing.
It's very impressive to see. I'm excited for you all to get the chance to get, go through this and do it. It's just an, it's the most, what I've seen, it's a project that's the most applied and just much more like the kinds of things you'll need to do as you keep going on. So, it's great that you get the chance to do that and really take you, find your own path in this project.
Patty, just wanted to ask a question about the assembly yesterday. Did you feel like the kids got it? Did you feel like they really understood the, how dangerous vaping is and that?
I can't really speak for the student body. I didn't really talk to enough people about it. From my perspective of the booth, I think she brought up some pretty good points. I don't know how much it stuck with the students, or if it changed their perspective or not.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
It, I will say, in fairness, it is kind of a hard topic to kind of convince students, like really show them like how dangerous it can be. I personally like know all the dangers of it, so I'm not doing any of that kind of stuff. But it's kind of just a hard topic to talk. I think it's just the generational gap, where it's between like the district attorney and us. It's just kind of a hard topic to speak about. But I think she did a decent job of like bringing up the concerns about it. But you're not, you're never gonna get through completely, but I think she did a good job of getting through to majority of the students there.
Excellent. Appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Moving forward in our agenda, we're very lucky to have Rep. Hogan with us tonight. And before I kick it over to Dr. Girardi and to Mary and Dawn, who have been involved in this pretty heavily, I just want to say thank you for coming out tonight. The conversation about school funding has been picking up steam recently. I'm a member of an association in Lexington, and I know that my association in Lexington is signing on with the Mass Teachers Association to really further the conversation and advocate, because we're in a very advantageous position in the district that I teach in, but we're aware that many of our sister cities and towns are not as lucky as we are. And we have a presentation tonight that we would like to offer, and then we'll do a chance for a Q and A immediately following. So, Dr. Girardi, Mary?
Well, I too would like to thank Representative Hogan for being here.
And also, she reaches out to me on a regular basis and asks us what the superintendent's, what the staff and the school committee feel about certain things. And so, she really represents our district well. We really appreciate it, and coming here is great. So, we appreciate you being here. The first thing I'm gonna show you is a video, and then Michelle Rosendies, our finance director, is gonna show you the impact to Maynard, the positive impact that could happen. I'm gonna show you a video, because the Massachusetts Association of School Committees and the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents have really been supporting the foundation budget review. And there's a video called "A Tale of Two Sisters" that I'd like to show. It's pretty impactful. Let me see it. And then, it'll be interesting to see how Maynard fits that. So, let's play the video first.
When Jamie Eldridge was here too, Kate, we presented him with the same, the same film, so.
Welcome to the Commonwealth of Massachusetts, where we pride ourselves in having one of the best public education systems in the country. This is a place where we hold the truth to be self-proclaimed, that all children, regardless of ethnicity or religion, income or zip code, are endowed by this Commonwealth with a certain unalienable right to an equitable foundational education. But what if I told you this foundation of equity is become meaningless? What if I told you that while all communities here in the Commonwealth are held to the same high academic performance standards, not all communities are able to provide equal tools to achieve these goals? What if I told you there is a critical imbalance in our ability to provide teachers and students with the supports they need, and that this inequity is oftentimes based on the zip code alone? What if I introduced you to two educators, two sisters, both teaching children in public schools, but in different zip codes? And because of these zip codes, we're in vastly different realities. Let me tell you a tale of two sisters. Laura Phillips is an art teacher at Marshall Simon Middle School in Burlington.
I've been super lucky. I have the ability to do whatever I want in my classes and authorize it. I decide that I'm gonna do a special project, you know, I reach out to the principal of the superintendent, and for some way, we get funded. Everything I need is provided by my school system. The district basically provides everything from pencils to notebooks to art materials. It affects my teaching, because I'm not worried about the kids not having anything. I'm not worried about the kids that can't afford it. The kids that can afford it, you know, they might bring in extra things, but everyone is equal. This is a pretty well-equipped classroom, and I teach kids things that they would never learn in middle school. Like, we run a folk club after school. It's free. And normally, we have about 24 kids. I mean, I have, you know, 35-millimeter cameras for middle school students. We use the computers. We, you know, we use acrylic paint, which, you know, I listen to other middle school teachers, and none of these supplies are even available to them.
Laura's boss is Dr. Eric, superintendent of the Burlington Public Schools. Burlington has a $60 million budget, 3,500 students, and spends $17,200 per year per student.
What just happened? Uh-oh. Barbara lost the sound.
All right. We need the boys.
There. Oh, no. Oh, no. Uh-oh.
Pat, can you offer assistance or? You'll be able to do it in two minutes, two seconds.
You know we need it.
Yes.
It's off, it's a YouTube video. It's right off of YouTube.
Building, he bad, it's bad, it's hamster. So, we're trying to make sure those relationships that students have with adults, charismatic adults, is what the research says, that there are opportunities for kids to form those relationships, because that's when real learning takes place, and that's where that sustained learning can happen, you know, over time. We have a very active business community that's very supportive with the schools. Our Chamber of Commerce is, couldn't be more supportive. We have an education foundation that provides fundraisers every year, provides opportunity for innovation.
But this is the story of two teachers, not one. Remember, not all teachers are as fortunate as Laura. One such teacher is Laura's sister, Karen Catterwell.
One of the mottoes that we've had in Brockton the last couple of years is that we do more with less. And every year, we're asked to do more with less. For classroom supplies, every year, I buy my class all my own notebooks, because I know some of my students can't afford them. So, I purchase them with my own money. I purchase two-pocket portfolios. I buy pencils. I buy a pencil sharpener, and they're not reimbursed. Because of budget cuts, I've changed grades so many times. My kids are at a disadvantage, because we don't have all those resources. They've cut all our extracurricular programs, except for sports. So, the kids don't have a science club, or a photography club, or homework help, or anything like that. We don't attract the best teachers, because they know they may lose their job. We have cuts every year. So, forming a collegial base in a strong cooperative learning environment, the person that you work with the last year might not be the person you work with the next year. So, from my standpoint as a teacher, I am not looking for more than what anybody else gets. I'm looking for the same. So, if I'm held to the same standards, I should have the same materials, supplies, support.
Karen's boss is Dr. Kathleen Smith, superintendent of the Brockton public schools. Brockton has a $260 million budget and nearly 18,000 students. Brockton spends just $14,000 per year per student.
The beginning of my school year was to really looking across the auditorium, and what we did was we put out 80 yellow ribbons in that auditorium. And that 80 yellow ribbon signified the 80 teachers that had been in the previous year that were no longer in the district. 80 teachers were laid off because of budget cuts. Little by little, we have watched a reduction in Chapter 70 funding throughout the state. Funding that was supposed to provide an adequate education for every child in the matter of the zip code has now been reduced, when we're spending, and this is not just Brockton, additional funding for special education mandates, which our children need, additional funding for health insurance that we have to provide to all our employees, inflation rates that are out of control, you know, spending for professional development with the mandates that our teachers face, making sure that we are leading the nation, we are number one, we provide a rigorous curriculum. All of that, while funds in Brockton over the past five years, we have been cutting, cutting, cutting. You look at some of your more affluent districts, they spend close to $300 per student, which is appropriate, and it is needed in this day and time. Last year, when we reduced 80 teachers, we spent $1.24 per student on a supply budget for materials, curriculum, supplies. Never mind talking about technology, that was reduced from $5 million to $1 million. For some districts, they are able to go above and beyond once they need foundation. If they want to bring one-to-one devices throughout the district, they're able to put an extra million, an extra $2 million, et cetera, into their budget to be able to support those initiatives with the new high-stakes testing coming in. When you're talking about your urban districts and your gateway cities, we do not have that opportunity. Our makeup now, 80% minority students in our district, a poverty rate that at one point was registering, 81% of our students were receiving free reduced lunch. During that same time period, we have reduced our teaching staff by 200 teachers. At one point, we had 18 in the first grade classroom, who were able to provide a power professional to work with our teacher to provide those extra supports, interventionists to make sure our children were reading by grade three. What we now have is a district trying to keep their head above water.
The disparities between these two school systems are not an anomaly. The lack of equitable support for students stems from an outdated educational funding formula that was adopted in 1993. Laura and Karen recently sat down to discuss the differences in their schools.
In Burlington, they want you to be innovative. They want, you know, they're trying to prepare students for the 21st century, you know, with what's out there, you know, technology, coding, all that stuff.
Science and justice.
And science, we do, we have robotics, and like I was asking you, do you have any of that in your schools?
And I think that, but you're only in middle school. We have a lot of those programs, but they're not until high school. You have to charge your club. We don't even have a camera. I have to borrow them from you when I want to photograph anything.
And I think a lot of these things need to start earlier, because, you know, kids are making decisions in middle school now, you know, do I go to a tech school, or do I go to, you know, a public school or private school? And it's important that the school provide everybody with equal opportunities.
It's not so much the class size, because your class size is getting bigger now too, but it's the support and the assistance you guys get within your classroom.
Right. So, just recently, we just bought every single team of old teachers. Now, four teachers have a special ed teacher that travels with their kids, because our numbers are growing, our, you know, 504s and our ELL numbers and people on IEP students. It's like, you know, we're starting to feel that as well, and we need the support, and I feel like they're growing, and we are also dealing with other issues now, you know.
Right. Social, emotional things. If you guys at least address, I mean, we try, but we don't have psychiatrists and psychologists in every school like you do.
Right. We just bought that, which is awesome, you know, because we do have a lot of those.
We have a special teacher in every grade, every team. Four teachers get their own special teacher, their own reading assistant, helper, their own math teacher, extra people. So, for we have four people, and for every four, we have US seven.
Yeah.
And we don't even have materials to do great things.
Right. So, it's unfair. It's like, I feel like a lot of the time is spent with teachers that are struggling, schools are struggling, they're like doing fundraisers and things like that, but it shouldn't be used for things that should be provided for the school. I mean, that should be totally like for some crazy project, like extra. But anything that.
Curriculum.
Curriculum, every student should have the same, they should all be able to have the specials that make a well-rounded, you know, student.
Same experiences. If it's a public school and it's the same state, we all should have the same. It's not fair that the kids in my school, we have great kids, and they're now given all the opportunities that represent themselves, for them to make a good choice of what to do for a career, to prepare for a job, just to be prepared even for college.
Yeah. You know, every day, coming to school, knowing that this is a great place to be and that.
Not hiring jobs is gonna be a limit of the beginning of the year.
Right. I, for the first time, I have a new colleague, and it's because someone retired. So, we, you know, get new blood, and people leave the school, you know, for good reasons. Not because they're cut, because there's no funding. And I have been complete new teams for the last four years. You know, that's horrible.
Think about that for a moment. You wouldn't use Windows 3.1 on an Apple 2E computer today, yet Massachusetts continues to fund public education on a formula created in 1993. 1993 did not take into account technology in classrooms, let alone information technology departments in schools. 1993 did not take into account school safety, or social and emotional wellness, or the expansion of special education services. And let's not forget today's health insurance costs, costs that exceeded in 1993 formula's projections by 140%. It's something that Dr. Conti, Dr. Smith, and many other superintendents across the Commonwealth discuss on a regular basis.
You know, Eric, going back four years ago, I had come on as superintendent just before that, and I was so excited when I saw the foundation budget review commission really started to look at those areas that were impacting Brockton. Low income, liberal education, special education, and certainly healthcare costs for all of us in the Commonwealth. And it has just been amazing, in a very negative way, that when I look at last year, it got to the point that we were dealing with a $16 million deficit. And I can't imagine, on a $220 million budget, you know, we looked at everything we could to try to stay away from the classroom. You know, we tried to look at, you know, other additional programs. Is that really a curriculum we have to purchase right now? Can you cut technology? And what it came down to in the end was, last year, we started with 80 less teachers than we had the year before. Instruction materials were cut from probably about $80, we gave every principal per student in their school, down to $1.24 over three or four short years. And I'm really getting disappointed, and I'm frustrated, when I think about the things that really do need to happen with that foundation budget to support districts like Brockton. How are you dealing with that?
Well, differently, because the foundation has really become meaningless.
Well, differently, because the foundation has really become meaningless over the past five years. So I think for certain communities that have the means, the foundations ignore it essentially. And as I said, we are going to continue to promote programming and establish our own equity within our community. But that doesn't, from a state perspective, that's just, I think, increasing the inequity across all school districts. And the teaching and learning that I see here in Ed Davis is phenomenal. And so I don't blame when people make this conversation about teaching and learning, because I think there's exceptional teaching and learning in all districts, and I think we have a lot to learn from each other. Every job's important in the Commonwealth, and it should be all of our actions to make sure that they all have that same chance of success, because providing them that gateway to be successful citizens and productive citizens helps us in the long run. And I think it's going to be more expensive to not deal with these problems earlier, these challenges early, and to get all of our children engaged, you know, moving forward. Someone said to me once, you know, we're not going to discover gas and oil in Massachusetts. You know, our economy is a brain-driven economy, and there's not enough suburban kids to fill the jobs that are open now. So even if you don't have a moral, ethical fiber in your body, which I think drives all of us, but I'm saying even if you don't have that, there's a mathematical morality that we have to fill these positions, and these are the children in schools like Davis that are going to do it.
And while some communities, like Burlington, have been fortunate enough to supplement their budgets with local funding, many, like Brockton, have not. This has created significant inequity in both the education and opportunity for all students. It is something that Dr. Conti and the entire membership of the Massachusetts Association of School Superintendents strongly believes needs to be fixed now.
Massachusetts is in the place that it's in nationally because of the work that was done 25 years ago, and that brought together lawmakers, educators, the business community, made significant changes in the school funding formula, standards, assessment, and governance. Public schools were really reshaped, and we're reaping the benefits of that. We have to have another effort like that for the next 25 years. Reshaping the funding formula for schools is the foundation of that work. If anything, what we've learned over the last 25 years is investing in children in the Commonwealth pays off every time. Please, please, let's make sure that we provide all students across the Commonwealth, all communities across the Commonwealth, a realistic foundation for them to provide a high-quality education that continues to keep Massachusetts' families and children and our economy performing at the level that it has been performing.
So, that was a pretty powerful story of two different communities, and we're really fortunate in Maynard. I'm going to have Michelle come up and talk about, you know, the Maynard dynamics. We have been so fortunate that we work in a great town where the school and the town work together. The town has been very generous to our schools. We're somewhere in between Brockton and Burlington, probably closer, much closer to Burlington, quite frankly. And yet, Michelle's going to talk about the very specifics of what implementing the foundation budget review would do for Maynard. So, for that...
He's got to pull out his glasses. Blessed with good vision.
I'll let you do it. Yeah. So anyway, Michelle's going to take over from this point to talk about the details as far as how the foundation budget review would impact Maynard.
So, I probably don't have to go through this all again, but again, what we're talking about is a formula that was created back in 1993, that if you basically think about it, we're being funded in the past but trying to provide for the future. So, you know, that's where this really comes into play, is, you know, the different things that we're able to provide to our students to make them successful. So it was intended to assure a fair and adequate minimum spending by defining a foundation budget for each community. Basically, communities pay a share of the foundation budget based on their ability to pay aggregate wealth and using property taxes and income. It's actually a pretty complex formula. I meant to add a slide that I had used in a previous presentation that really breaks down how the foundation formula, how Chapter 70 is calculated, and how each district receives their funds. The findings, as we, as they had said in the video, benefits, special education, English-language learners, and low-income students, these are the areas that, you know, really are almost the problem areas, I guess you could say, not because of, it's, our funding is not equal to what we're spending on these different areas. So MASC and MSS did this, and a couple of different business administrators, they did this tale of five communities. And it was Brockton, Holyoke, Springfield, and Worcester. I wanted to see where Maynard fell in this. So, basically, there's a bunch of calculations, but what it comes up with is that Maynard has a $2.9 million gap when it comes to benefits. So that means that the foundation formula provides us for a certain amount, and you'll see it later on in the slides, and what we actually spend on benefits, and there's a $2.9 million gap. For special education, it's $2.8 million. So the total gap between the foundation budget, just on these two areas, is $5.7 million. This just breaks down just employee benefits. So our actual spending is $4.2 million. What the foundation budget is saying that we should be spending on benefits, or lots to us, is $1.3 million, which creates that $2.9 million gap. And if you look as a percentage of foundation, we're spending 323% more, which is higher than most of those other districts. And probably because we have the ability to pay more, we talked, the last time I gave this presentation, about how much Maynard on its own gives above net school spending, above our required contribution. I didn't have the number last time, but I, this time, had pulled it out. So, Maynard generally, this year, or last year, spent 3.34 more than what we were required to on education, meaning, you know, the community was invested in spending the money on the school districts that we need in order to be competitive, in order to provide, you know, exceptional education to these students. This is special ed. Our actual spending for special education is $4.3 million. The foundation budget allows for $1.5 million, leaving us a $2.8 million gap. Again, our percentage is, actually, on this is, you know, pretty in line with some of those other districts. And a lot of our spending, I just want to go back to, a lot of our spending when it comes to special ed, or benefits, or, you know, the other areas that we're spending our money on, comes from mandates that are handed down from the state and the federal government. So we're held to those mandates, so we have to provide these things, which we would want to, because we truly believe in equity for all students. So what it goes to show, one, that Maynard is really dedicated to providing what they can for their students, but that, you know, even as small as a district as we are, with as much as we're investing, you know, we still have a $5.7 million gap. Like, it needs to be reviewed in the sense of, you know, we really need to have the ability and not have our hands tied anymore. What I wanted to talk about this slide is, I decided that I was going to look at, you know, other than those, you know, five areas that they had, or three areas that they had come up with, you know, I wanted to look at our analysis, like, just for our district. And if you notice, the first four, guidance, other teaching service, classroom and specialist teachers, and instructional leadership, we're spending more than what the foundation budget says that we should be spending on those areas. And I truly believe it's because of our investment in wraparound services for our students. We have the psychologists, we have those guidance counselors, we have paraprofessional support in these classrooms. You know, we have somewhat smaller class sizes as well, so we have more teachers. We look to instructional leadership as, you know, building our teachers, providing an opportunity for them to learn and have people to learn from. What this tells me, though, is if you look at the last three, operations and maintenance, teacher professional development, and instructional materials, that's at the cost of those areas. So we're able to provide more than what we technically are supposed to be in areas that we feel passionate about, at the expense of, you know, our buildings, at the expense of teacher professional development. That's, that's a huge, you know, we should be allowing our teachers to get as much professional development so that they can grow in order to help them have our students grow. Instructional materials, you know, that's, that's taking away from, like, they talked, you know, in Brockton, you know, the $1.24. I mean, we're not there, but as you can tell, you know, we're feeling it. It's happening here as well, even being as funded as we are. So, hold on.
You had to add that, Michelle. I saw an earlier version of that, and they, you heard them say, in Brockton, the class sizes are, they said really high, and in Burlington, they've gone up. Brockton class sizes are over 30, Burlington, they're up to about 27. In Maynard, our elementaries are between 23 and 24. So, you can see, we're in really good shape because this town has funded education well, does believe in education. We're not in the same place as other districts, but it is interesting when you compare these other districts.
Again, I just like, to me, this was kind of eye-opening, because I, it just, one, it made me proud, because it shows that we're invested in our students, we're invested in that social, emotional support, we're invested in that, you know, behaviors, the, like I said, wraparound services for our students, we really are. But on another side, it's, you know, how much more can we take away? And when we're done at this, at the operations, the teachers' PD, those instructional materials, those expense line items, you know, the next thing that we're, which we already have, we've been creative. We have went through, we faced five years, I believe, of cuts here in this district, and we've went through the staff, we went through the teachers, we've done administration, we've done support services. You know, this is all we're kind of left with, that we're going, you know, expense line by line, trying to, you know, save here, or shift here, you know, in order for us to continue to provide the services that we provide at Maynard. I know I talked about it the last time, and we actually talked about it today, those senior projects. I was a part of that. I said the last time, you know, my daughter goes to Hudson High. I wish there was something like that at Hudson High for her to participate in. I wish there was something for me, it maybe would have made me more comfortable in this situation now. Those are real-life experiences that these students are getting, that I think it adds more value to education, the more that we invest in those things. I also participated in an interview process with the seniors, which I thought was phenomenal. You know, there were some really awesome students, and I think having that experience and that ability to, you know, really relate what they're doing in school to what's going to happen to them in the, in the real world, is, like I said, priceless. So this just, I wanted to just go over, like, what the implementation models would mean for Maynard. So, no change, stays the same. Model one and model two, it's an additional 944, 264. Model three and four is 1.2, basically. I wanted to explain that model one and model two and model three and model four, for other districts may change, but for Maynard, it doesn't, because we meet our minimum contribution. So for other districts, it would mean probably a lot more money than it does to us, but I'll said it before and I'll say it again, even at 1.2, I don't feel is enough for us. But it's a start, and we're all in education for a reason. I truly believe that anybody who goes into education or volunteers to a school, you know, you're there for the kids, you're there to make sure that these children have the opportunities that you feel they, no matter if it's in Maynard, Brockton, Burlington, anywhere across the state. So, you know, coming together as communities to talk about this and to push this forward not only would benefit us, but also would benefit all these other districts as well. So this is just, you know, when the, they did their paper and they went through, the commission went through, these were kind of the findings and the recommendations. And for health insurance, they found actual spending far exceeds current foundation budget allotment by more than 140%, which that was actually true for us as well. Current formula does not factor in the cost for retiree health insurance. Recommendation is to adjust the employee health insurance rate to the state's GIC rate, add retired employee health insurance to the foundation budget, change inflation factor to annual change to GIC rates. For special education, districts spend far more than the current foundation budget allotment for out-of-district placements by more than 59%, and if you actually saw ours, was even more than that. The current assumed in-district special education enrollment is less than actual statewide enrollment. Recommendation is to increase the assumed in-district special education enrollment, to increase the out-of-district cost rate to capture the total cost that districts bear before circuit breaker is triggered. So, just to give an idea of what circuit breaker is, circuit breaker is our special education funding that comes, so it's a reimbursement that we get for a portion of our special ed costs. So basically, what it says is, they say we should spend each child that is placed out of district, for example, there's other things that go into it, I'm really simplifying this, by the way, says, you know, we should be spending $40,000 for the student. We actually spend, you know, $75,000 or, you know, $60,000 for the student. What circuit breaker does is reimburse you that $20,000 in between, but not 100% either. It reimburses you at a percentage, I believe last year was 72%. So even though they're sending us a reimbursement, we're still not even getting that full reimbursement, but that is what helps us with some of our special ed expenses. Another in-district recommendation for special education is increase the assumed in-district special ed enrollment rate from 3.75% to 4% for non-vocational students, and 4.75% to 5% for vocational students. Out-of-district recommendation is increase the out-of-district special ed cost rate to capture the total cost that district bears before circuit breaker reimbursement is triggered. One example is how this might be done, is to increase the out-of-district special education cost rate by an amount equal to the following. So it's four times the statewide foundation budget per pupil amount. I mean, that's, that's basically it. I'm kind of summarizing what the video told you, but I just wanted to relate it to us here. You know, we talk about Brockton, we talk about Burlington, and, you know, I think it's a great conversation to talk about Maynard. And also, I think what we encouraged the last time we had spoke with this, although it seems, you know, with the budget that came out yesterday, or the...
Definitely proposal.
Proposal that came out yesterday, you know, there are strides being made in this. But again, you know, it's our voice, it's our voice as a community, it's our voice that helps push these things along and to make everyone aware that, you know, sometimes we get into the battle of town versus school, the budget battle, we're all in the budget right now. And it, we have to remember that all of our hands are tied at some point, and that we need to, you know, kind of go to our state and say, like, we can't keep battling each other over these things, we need to be properly funded so that we can continue to provide exceptional services.
Thanks, thanks, Michelle.
Good?
Michelle, thank you. Kate, would you like to...
Kate, would you like to step up to the mic and give us a quick update? I told you it was coming. I just didn't tell you how long you were going to be sitting there until we called on you, so. I think I drastically
Hi, everybody. Kate Hogan here. Thank you for the movie. Did anyone else have any other comments before I made any?
No, I mean, I think, Kate, before the meeting started, I told you, I'm a member of an association in a neighboring district, and
Yep.
I'm one of the lucky districts, and I can't emphasize enough how much the public education sphere needs to modernize the funding formulas. You know, twenty-five years ago, the foundation budget formula was created, and it was flawed at the time, but it would
I know these things.
Oh, I know, but I'm, you know,
And I wasn't here twenty-five years ago, but
We're in a lot of agreement on things, but for
We are.
Members watching at home.
Yep, absolutely.
And everything costs more twenty-five years later, and we're still trying to pay for things like it's nineteen ninety-three.
And I think what happens, too, is economies get in the way. I know when I came in in two thousand and nine, elected, two thousand and ten, came to legislature, we had the Great Recession. So we actually decreased the amounts of money that we were sending to communities, and that was my first, my first session, my first two years, having to go tell all of my communities that we're actually taking money away rather than increasing, which is what's happened since we've come out of the Great Recession, but having it not be enough due to the fact that we were never able to implement the foundation budget. What's going to happen this year, I do believe, and I am neither the Senate President nor the House Speaker nor the Governor, but I think what is going to happen this year is that we are going to see each of our budgets assembled with the assumption that a foundation budget bill, an education bill for the twenty-first century, will be passed in this session. So the Governor has come out with his numbers, and what I thought I would do is just quickly let you know that in terms of Chapter Seventy and healthcare, ELL, all of the issues that were brought up. And thank you so much, Michelle, for the talk-through on those, they're really interesting, and it is a struggle. And thank you, Superintendent, for putting up the movie because it is important to understand. But we have begun to put forward numbers that we're looking at. We cannot implement a foundation budget in one year or two years or three years. What we're going to try to do is somewhere between four and five, but again, always praying that our economy stays where it is. One of my greatest fears is when we start to increase foundation budgets, we start to have economic problems. And that is virtually, I don't know, can't explain what it feels like, except you're standing on the floor and the floor goes away, and you are trying to put together all of these budgets, and you don't have the cash to do it. We had talked last year also, in the last session, about the millionaire's tax that would raise money going directly to education, going directly to transportation. That did not pass, was found to be unconstitutional, so it wasn't allowed on as a referenda item. We're looking at ways that we can divert more monies into education so that we can properly fund the foundation budget and move forward, and do it in partnership with our schools, do it in partnerships with our school committees, and do it in partnership with the Governor. The other thing I do like to mention, too, is these are strange days in Washington. So as our brave and wonderful school committee sits here trying to get it done for Maynard, so we tried to get it done at the state level with Washington virtually dysfunctional at this point. We are hoping things get better, we are hoping the budgets get passed, we are hoping that we get funding, that you get funding, but we are living in tenuous times in terms of Washington. It does make us better with each other. I hope that this year we can promise that we will deliver you this and help to make the strides that we need to make in Maynard. I see so many different school districts, I see so many different schools, schools and programs, and truly, Maynard is very unique. We were here when our high school was built and the process we went through for that, and we know the wonderful part about Maynard is that it has a small high school. The really hard part about Maynard is that we are not part of a larger school system, and it just makes it more expensive, it makes it a little bit harder. And we realize that, you know, with nine thousand people, sometimes those economies of scale, everything hurts. I realize when you're saying that kids are moving, you know, that you may have a number of kids that are moving to a charter school, in another school district, it might not be quite as impactful as it is in a smaller school because you're actually, you're actually seeing percentages leave your budget. And I really understand that, and that's something I've really been talking also to the education committee about, what do we do with school districts where the scale is so small that it's so hard to take any hits at all? Really committed to continuing to have that conversation. I'd like to continue to have it with folks here as we move forward on the school committee because I think that, too, is something that no matter how much we fund, it still doesn't take away the fact that we are small economy and therefore, even if we have town halls stepping up as they do, and having our school committee and the folks that run our schools doing it so well, we still feel everything more deeply than schools that just have a lot bigger towns, a lot bigger revenue coming in so that they can look at it a little bit different way. So I really appreciate being here tonight, and I wanted to also mention that over the last, I don't know, I want to say two or three months, I've been having conversations with parents and kids all around my district. I have four towns and three different schools around bullying and what that means and how it's affected kids in the schools. And I want to continue to do that, just basically sitting down, excuse me, having coffee, talking, and getting an idea. We passed important legislation in 2010, we came back and changed it in 2014. I feel like we're missing something around the whole cyberspace and social media, and, you know, I'm looking forward to working on that and understanding it better, excuse So I just wanted to let you folks know, because of course, you know, actually just very casual conversations, to try to better understand where we can go, if there's something we can do at the state level, if there are things that I need to understand. It's always so scary when you're talking about individual kids and then you're talking about legislation, because legislation, it can be awkward, and you want it to fit everybody, and it sometimes doesn't. And when you're talking about 2010 and social media, it's not even the same thing. It's not, it was not the same world as it is now. Even 2014, it's not the same world as it is now. So, you know, for me to better understand and better help in that regard as we're talking about those issues, I'm really dedicated to get, you know, getting a better understanding of that through talking with parents and talking with the school committee and talking with anyone, any of the teachers that would be interested in discussing it, too, and I'll reach out when, you know, we get to the point where we want to start to talk to more people in the conversation. So I won't get into the foundation budget, I think that has been very well expressed here, and thank you so much for that again. And if anybody has any further questions as we go through the budget, feel free. You know, we have the Governor's budget, it is well-funded, he has a seven-year plan, and that's called House One, and then the House will come out with a budget, House Two, and we will move on from there to the Senate. And out of those three budgets shall come the budget for 2020, and I am feeling very, very confident because of the amount of energy both from inside the legislature and certainly everyone here, here and here, I am sure that you're very interested in making sure that those foundations budgets, you know, the foundation budget is funded, and I feel confident that we're going to be able to do that this year, so. And any questions, either this side or that side?
I have a question and then a plea. I saw in the news this week that Governor Baker's going to introduce a sports betting bill in front of the legislature, and I'm wondering if there's been any preliminary conversation amongst your colleagues should that pass, where that potential revenue stream might be directed?
Well, it would come through us, so there will be plenty of discussion where that money goes. I mean, essentially, and really and truly, when we do a budget, the first thing we do is local aid and Chapter Seventy. It is the first thing we do. Sixty-five percent of our budget is taken up with Health and Human Services, and, you know, what we have and what we have left over from those things that we are having to pay and coming out automatically out of the budget, we immediately go to Chapter Seventy and local aid because everyone has that interest at heart. We're all there from communities, and we're all there to make sure that our communities get funded, so truly. And if that does come through, it will certainly come through. His bill will then become other bills as you see the budget happen. That's also what happens with bills that are introduced by the Governor or by, you know, for instance, Marah Healy can file, and then maybe somebody picks it up or somebody doesn't. So if it does and sports betting comes up, there will be much discussion, and I couldn't imagine that education wouldn't be one of the top priorities in terms of any kind of monies being made and spent.
Perfect. And then my plea, when Senator Eldridge was here last month, he brought up the topic of charter schools, and it's something that we spend a lot of time thinking about because charter schools are well-intended, but there's still a substantial drain on the cities and towns. And there's a growing understanding that we are on an unequal level, and it's a pitched playing field, so to speak, because we are, as a public school, asked to play by a certain rulebook. And it's become increasingly clear over the years as charter schools have continued to operate that they play by a slightly different rulebook, and I think if we're going to put the idea of "public" in the title of a charter school, then they should be asked to play by the same rules that the public schools are. And we've watched our local charter schools self-select their populations over the years, and there's a lot of questions that we have about how they operate and why they're allowed to operate in certain ways when we, as a public school system, are asked to take any and all students who show up at our front door. And it's something that I asked Senator Eldridge to think about, and it's something that I'm just going to ask you to think about also, because the playing field's not level, and I think we need to have a conversation about that as well. So that's my plea. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Mary?
Following on what Justin said, as well as not being equitable as far as, you know, what students they can take, and we have to take everyone, the funding mechanism, because Marlboro right now, is it a maximum of the number of students that they can send because it's the nine percent of their budget?
Yep.
And with school choice, it's an automatic five thousand dollars that goes one way or the other. But with charter schools, it's on a per-student basis, and where Maynard is a small school system, our cost per pupil is higher, so our students are, I hate to say, you know, they're more marketable because
Right, right.
We're going to be, we're going to be giving AMSA more money per, or any charter school more money than, say, Clinton or Hudson would, because to your point, they're bigger school systems, so it's a lower cost per student. So that is absolutely not fair, and it should be right across the board.
Is the impact from one charter school that you feel in this area more than one? Is there, are there, would you say, like?
So I'm just applying my industry knowledge and understanding that there's charter schools
But specifically to Maynard, how many charter schools have an impact
AMSA.
On Maynard?
There's AMSA primarily.
Parker.
And Parker.
So maybe one or two?
Yeah, so one big one and one small.
Okay.
Right, right. So, and then I had a more of a question or sort of just, tell us how we can help you because, again, and you brought it up, Maynard's an anomaly, and sometimes I feel like that doesn't get to the state level. Dawn sent Jamie a note last week asking, how is the foundation budget, the change going to help Maynard or hurt Maynard? Because we are an anomaly, and sometimes I feel like we're considered to be more affluent than we are, and that's how the state looks at us. So help us, help you get that message to the state of what our needs are, to be equitable. Again, we're just asking to be equitable, so.
Absolutely. And hopefully with the economy coming, you know, roaring and the downtown really picking up steam, One Twenty-Nine Parker.
Yeah, we're getting supermarket.
I mean, none of these are, we're getting a market basket.
Yeah, it's a supermarket.
More likes than anything, public policy, market basket.
Dominating my social media feed this
Absolutely, but, you know, I think as our economy gets stronger and if we, you know, I am so dedicated to getting Maynard back up and running, and we're doing so well right now, making all those hurdles, and again, the smaller the economy, the harder it is to get that engine really going because you feel every effect, and you're always going to have setbacks on a road to success. So, you know, as we see One Twenty-Nine Parker, as we work to try to fill the mill and see what the issues might be over there to keep that, you know, those aren't going to solve our tax problems, they're just not, but they are going to help, and it's going to bring more people to us, more jobs, and more ability to be less, you know, to feel like you're not in a position to make choices. And I think that's what's really hard in a small school, it's really hard to make choices because you don't have the ability and the monies of the larger schools. So I think it is difficult for Maynard because we have an excellent school system, excellent teachers, and of course, an excellent school committee that works very well with town government, which isn't always the case, and yet, you know, it's difficult to get that, you know, to feel like we have what we need. And, you know, we should never feel like we have what we need either. I mean, that is always a struggle, whether it's to be better at what we do or, you know, be able to, more grants, and by the way, congratulations on WAVM, Chapter Seventy-four, that was brilliant and wonderful, and I think great things will come from that, so. Great creative thinking. Does anybody else have any questions? I know those seats are a little hard. Good? No? Okay. Thank you all.
Thank you very much.
If not, Kate, I just want to take the opportunity to thank you. We see you a lot offline, and you're all, you're great about talking to us about all of our questions. You're one of those politicians that keeps my faith in politicians, we've worked together for a number of years. I could never do what you do because you're tirelessly everywhere, like, there's just no, I couldn't have done that when I was nine, at a age. So I just think, we are so lucky to have you, and I'm not saying that because you're here, I've said it, I say it when it matters. What I love about you is just that you're very approachable, you don't claim to be able to solve the problem right away, but you listen. I think those are really key things, so. I know we're early in the budget process in terms of the state, you know, we talk about it almost all year long at this point, but I look forward to follow-up conversations, sort of in-the-weeds kind of things, just to show you kind of what I'm seeing as we move through the budget. So I've definitely seen, you know, looked at the Governor's budget, looked at what's going up and what's going down, and some of the fine print, so I look forward to that follow-up conversation, but folks should know that you do those things. You truly are tireless, so just want to thank you.
Absolutely. And it's really good, I mean, one way you can't have is to figure out really fast what we're getting, because we can do that, too, but it's good to get a confirmation because sometimes there are reasons why numbers shift, and it might not be, I may not be spun on in what we're getting, so I think if we're working together to know as things start to proceed what the numbers really look like, it'll be helpful to me, so.
And I meant to leave with, thank you for your help with the Chapter Seventy-four because you were huge behind the scenes, so.
I just think it's so thrilling, and those kids are, oh, God, I just love them, they are tremendous kids, so.
You and I spent fifteen minutes talking about it at the telethon this year because we were beside each other in line, so.
And some of the people that you recommended to our parent committee for that program were just amazing, and they helped make it happen, so. We can't thank you enough for that.
Yeah.
Thank you, Kate, for giving us your time, really appreciate it.
Okay, let's shift topics, and let's go to the Green Meadow air quality update.
Okay, so as Dawn mentioned, Aaron had provided a document for us that discusses all of the timeline of activities and the recommended improvements that have taken place so far, and I'm sure he could speak to any questions as far as details on improvements. We're still planning meetings with our association to try and figure out what else needs to be done, but, you know, Aaron did do a nice job, a very comprehensive job finding that document, so I don't know if anybody has any questions about the document.
I don't.
I mean, I think we all had an opportunity to read and process the report that was recently provided by the association, which was the third round of air quality assessments. Yes, absolutely, it was given to us a couple of weeks ago. So before I open it up to the floor, because I know there's members of the audience that do have some interest in asking questions and some follow-up for you, Aaron, can you just sort of summarize the similarity between the reports as you see them, and also just speak to what you and Tim and the team have been able to accomplish as far as recommendations are concerned? I'm not asking you to delve into the weeds too much, but if you could give us a comprehensive the weeds too much, but if you could give us a, a comprehensive overview, I'd really appreciate it.
Yeah, absolutely. My name's Aaron McClosco. I'm the Director of Public Works for the town of Maynard. So I was invited here by the school committee and Dr. Girardi to speak on the, the concerns about the indoor air quality that were brought up in early September 2018. This is my third appearance at a school committee meeting to address this topic. And it's typically after we receive a report to provide a information and overview of that report, kind of status update of where we're at. So part of Public Works, one of the divisions is facilities maintenance and overseeing the building maintenance of all the municipal buildings as well as the three school buildings. So that's how I'm involved in this. When we were first notified of the individual's health concern regarding mold on September 6th, Dr. Girardi reached out to me directly and we immediately began investigating the issue. So it started out with, with a walk through of members of my staff of the building. And then we immediately called the Department of Public Health with the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. They're the, the governing body that oversees indoor air quality of public buildings. So that inspector did come out, later that week, did a initial inspection of the building and an assessment and determined there wasn't a health issue to the occupants of the building, so staff or students. They did provide some recommendations and some guidance, which we did take action on. Those are detailed in that report that I provided. Next step we did take was to do a third-party indoor air quality. So air sampling both inside the building throughout the areas, specifically of the area that was brought up concerned by the employee, through also other areas in the building and outside. And I do note that that was not recommended against, excuse me, the Department of Public Health inspector recommended specifically against indoor air quality inspections for mold because there's not a standard out there. You're going to find mold inside a building outside. There's not a health standard. There's only recommendations that can be provided. So we did take that action and that next step with guidance from Dr. Girardi. The results showed that there was not an elevated level of mold in the building as compared to the outdoor levels. There was not a reason of concern. Again, that report provided some general recommendations, which we did take action on. Thorough cleanings of some areas that did have higher, higher levels of mold than other areas in the building, but they're, again, not a significant level that the, either the inspector or the folks that provided those reports to us felt would cause a, a indoor air quality concern. Subsequent to that, the teachers' union hired their own third-party inspector to come out and do air quality inspection. That inspection was done in September, excuse me, October. That inspector came out, inspected the buildings. We let them into all areas, provided them full access to wherever they wanted to inspect inside the building. We received a report from them two months later, at the end of December. That report was shared with Dr. Girardi and that report was then shared with the public. That report included the reports that were previously completed by ASAP Environmental and concurred with what we had found previously that there was not an indoor air quality concern as it relates to mold. We've gone through the building. We've done a, a number of maintenance activities, including changing out tiles, installing ceiling tiles where there are missing, scrubbing of rooms, disinfecting. We are continuing to investigate opportunities to further improve indoor air quality as, as, as a whole, specifically changing out different types of filters and, and installing a filter that will better purify the air. And we're still working on that. But as you can see, I'm not going to read through every bullet point that I provided on the, the two-page document unless, you know, if there's a specific question to it, I can address it. But we've done a, a lot of cleaning and are confident that there's not a mold problem at the Green Meadow School. I'll be the first to tell you that it's an old building and it's not the, it's not the greatest building. You know, the building was originally built 1974. It's 63 years old. Or, excuse me, 1955. That's, that's 63 years old. 1974 was the second addition where the, where the preschool is and the auditorium. And in 1988 was the most recent addition, which is where, you know, the hill and the, the, the older grades of the building. No major renovations since then or, or no major renovations to the oldest parts during the 1988 edition. So it's an old building and it's not the only old building in town. There's roof leaks in that building. I have roof leaks in other buildings right now too. We address those as we are identified. We did spend $27,000 last year in roof leaks. We are putting together, between the town and the, the school committee, are putting together a, a free cash article for this upcoming town meeting for $100,000 for roof repairs at town buildings to have that money on hand should we need it for any major renovations at, at the Green Meadow School or any other town buildings. I could tell you that I have a DPW highway garage that is leaking pretty severely today too. And so there's a lot of needs around town and we address those as we, as we are, are able to. Also, for the last two years now, the school committee and the board of selectmen have both voted to approve the submission of a, a statement of interest to the Massachusetts School Board Administration, MSBA? Is that right?
School Building Authority.
Thank you.
School Building Authority.
So, and what that statement of interest says is, is that it's the, the, the school district and the town are interested in pursuing a replacement of a school building. So we've replied to that the last two years. Unfortunately, we didn't make it the first year to the first round. This last year, we made it to the first round. They came out, they did a feasibility study and unfortunately, that's where they stopped us. But they did encourage us to submit again this year and we will be submitting that application, that statement of interest to the MSBA before the deadline in April to show that we do have a need for a new elementary school building based on not only the mold, but the other, you know, issues that have come to light in years past, lead paint. It's, it's an old building and it needs, it needs some, some TLC and some replacement. And it's really, it's really tough to do major renovations on buildings that are that old when you have infrastructure and, and, and technology gaps. So, you know, we're, we're pushing for a replacement of that building. In the meantime, we'll do, you know, my staff will do the best effort that we can with the funding that's available to maintain the building. They create a health, healthy and safe working and, and, and learning environment. So that, but again, it is an old building and we do the best that we can do with, with what we have available. We try to be proactive and responsive to the staff that are in the building. So I'm always open to hearing, you know, issues, complaints, compliments, you know, trying to pass this on to the staff. You know, I've met with, I know there's, there's familiar faces that are in the audience, you know, concerned parents that I met with individually following other meetings and that I've attended here, try to address those questions and concerns. So again, I stand by the facts that we, you know, we've brought in our, the highest authority in the state, the Department of Public Health. We brought in a third-party private, environmental agency and then also the teachers' union brought in their own third. And it solves, and all, all the information concurs that there's not a mold issue. You know, that stemmed from an individual's concern. I'm not going to get into that issue, but we feel we've assessed that and that's, that's kind of where we stand. Nothing has really changed other than, you know, the activities that we, we are doing and are continuing to do to try to improve and maintain.
Questions or clarification from members of the board?
Just wanted to add, because I had the opportunity to see Aaron yesterday because we were going to have a meeting and, short story, we didn't have the meeting. But a couple of things that he did mention tonight that I thought were helpful, to know that we have software that we're going to be launching hopefully in September when you and Tim get trained, which will allow us to take, you know, online, you know, if I'm a teacher and I'm teaching or a para, you know, I can immediately report a problem. We have a paper trail. We have accountability, you know, so I'm always a fan of technology and accountability because stuff needs to get done, right?
Yep.
So I was happy to hear that our software that we launched already has that module that we can put in place. Hopefully for our September launch would be great.
Yep, that's what, we're, we're, we're going for training in May.
Yeah.
And so hopefully.
Yeah, given the summer and training and all that. I thought Tim brought up a good point that he saw a town in mid-Massachusetts, midwestern Mass, whatever it is, got some funding straight from the state to deal with some things. So I happened to come across the article because I think my phone listens to me, right? So it's like, here's the article you guys were talking about. So I sent it to Tim and I'll follow up with Kate and Jamie because if they're getting money directly from the state and the state budget, that's another place we can ask for some funds. And then lastly, we have a planned meeting next week with both the paraprofessionals and the teachers' union representatives. So, you know, definitely collaborative approach. But just, those are some things from yesterday. You had covered a few of them, but I just wanted to add those in.
Appreciate it. If I can just add to that, that first comment from Dawn, is that, so we have a school, it's a work order management system. And what we're going to be rolling out is a portal that allows individuals to have, like the staff, to have logins to report work orders or work requests, issues within their classrooms or in the, in the building. And that'll be uploaded directly to kind of our cloud. And then we can make sure we track those work orders, address them, and then there'll be follow-up to, to individuals. So we can better track it rather than just, you know, a verbal pass in the hallway or an email or text message or something that might get lost. We'll have, have a way to track that and then provide, you know, feedback or response to the, to the individual as a concern.
And I'd just like to thank Aaron, his team, Dawn also for volunteering to help, and the staff members. As soon as the staff member reported to the principal and she reported to me, Aaron and his team were right on it. And they've been doing things ever since. As Aaron said, after the Department of Public Health did their inspection, they recommended not doing any more testing because there are no standards. That's a real problem. Maybe the state should come up with standards, but there are none. But even still, Aaron worked with me and I said, if it's, you know, if our staff have health concerns, we want to help our staff. And I really appreciate Aaron, you know, letting us move forward and doing the extra testing and then working with the MTA to continue to do even more testing. And we're still working with the MTA. They're asking for other reports. So I just want to thank Aaron and his team because really, the advice you got was not to go any further, but out of an abundance of caution for our, our staff and our students that are in that building, we're continuing to do everything we can to make sure the air quality is as good as we can possibly make it in an old building. So I want to thank you.
Marla?
I did want to ask, there were pictures in the report at the end that showed some, still some stained tiles. And I was just wondering whether or not those have been also taken care of over the winter break.
I can follow up on those specific photos and find out and get back to you on an answer. We have, we're actively, as, as we identify new stains or leaks, we'll replace them. Yeah.
I just want to mention too that some of the things that came up here, like the, there are things that are on schedules and you now have that automated as well. Like we, so the maintenance schedules, it's fairly new within the last few years that there's maintenance schedules now for all these buildings. So that when this rug needs to be replaced, they, they are able to track that and know, so we can also be able to plan for it in our, and in our capital planning and within the budgets related to town and school and look at that and be able to consider that as well. I don't want to misrepresent that, but am I saying that correctly?
Yeah.
So that's just an important piece. And also just for things like when to change the filters. Though, and I do know that, I noticed here that you, something that was again, above and beyond, but also a nice collaborative effort is having the air purifiers that have been requested, putting those on order for people that have requested those who still had concern just about air quality, nothing to do with the mold issue, but still just air quality. And looking at rug alternatives, I know that that's something that's been moving forward and I just wanted to point that out because that's obviously can really collect and be an issue. And so trying to think outside the box for ways to be able to address the issue in, in one as an old building. So appreciate that. But I just wanted to point that out and as, things that popped out at me when I was looking at this, if, if you're not seeing it right now as you're looking at it. But so I think that was it for particular things I wanted to mention. Yeah. So thank you. Thank you for the effort you put in. And I don't know if anyone else has anything else they want to mention for us.
Aaron, just one follow-up. I know that you attended, we were talking about supplemental purification, but as it related to the infrastructure at Green Meadow, and you indicated that there was a point where the electrical load, or the, the electrical system in the building hit a break point. Are we still in the green on this?
Correct.
Okay.
We're, we're at that level where what's, what's really taking a strain on the electrical system, both at Green Meadow and this building, is when we are installing individual air conditioning units in all, in the classrooms, those take, the, the amperage that it pulls from the system is significant. So we have to be very careful on not overloading that. I mean, it is an old electrical system that is in that building. So that's, you know, we try to keep that in mind when we're making these decisions about installing even the portable air, air purifiers in these individual rooms. I do want to note though, on the Univent, Univent devices that are in all of the classrooms, those have air filters in them. And that we are looking at, if you look at the second page, towards the bottom, the second to last bullet, it does, we are reviewing options for filters with a higher MERV rating. And the higher MERV rating, basically it, it better purifies the air. They are more expensive and then you have to change them out frequently. So there's an additional cost to that. But that is one of the options that we're looking at doing for, and that's, would be building-wide.
Okay.
So that acts like a, a portable air filter, but it's just permanently in place. And if they're, if they're in operation, they're running properly and they're not blocked with debris being stacked on top of the Univent filters and allowed to exhaust properly, they'll function well and they'll, they'll purify the air that's in the room. That's what it's designed to do.
Okay. Members of the audience, questions, clarifications? I know a lot of you are here because you're interested in this. So Natasha, do you mind just going over towards the mic so you can be recorded for posterity? Thank you.
First, hi, Natasha Rivera. And I wanted to thank you, Aaron, for putting together this debrief. I thought it was very helpful to recap the transpiring of the events. I would ask that maybe this could be made available on either of the website for the parents who aren't available to be here.
Sure.
Reading the, the updated report, I mean, it's very daunting and it's totally out of my area of expertise to digest all of that information. But I wanted to ask, do you feel that no remediation is necessary? Just to, there was nothing that really said yea or nay. I haven't really heard anything. Is that something?
Remediation as far as?
Mold.
Yeah, correct.
Okay. So I just wanted to just.
Correct.
That's what we're, that's what the position of the district is, that there's no necessary steps?
So we've done, after the first report came out, right, the SAP report, we did do some deep cleanings in areas that showed elevated levels. The, the, it was the front foyer in one of the staff development rooms and that was listed on the, the bullet points. So there's a, a deep clean that was recommended in the report. But other than that, there's no, you know, there wasn't any surface mold found. These were air samples that were, that were taken. And their samples were still, even the elevated ones were similar levels to those found in the air outside of the building.
Okay. And the revised report, I mean, again, I, not, not, nothing that I really can speak to as an expert, but I noticed some things that were just, says high and moderate, things that I'm not able to really digest myself and understanding. Did that not cause concern or, in, in your interpretation of, of reading the report? Or is it something that, how it was written? Just is there an expert that really could speak to the severity of what those high and moderate levels mean? For like the layperson or parent to understand?
So nothing in the report showed anything that was, that we would find significant that would have a concern where it would cause a health and safety issue in the building. You're going to have areas that are higher than others and lower than others. It could be for a variety of reasons. It could be windows were left open, windows were closed, Univent filters were not operational. Nothing in that report showed any new findings of any, any areas, any significant findings that would alert us to be in a, a health and safety problem within the building. The person who wrote the report, Mike Cerici.
Yes.
The union's hired consultant, you would probably want to talk to him and ask him on his opinion on why he considered those. I, we haven't had a debrief from him. We've tried to schedule that.
Okay.
So I haven't been able to speak with him directly since he supplied us the report.
Okay. So there is going to be a?
And that's one of the follow-up items. Dawn spoke a moment ago about the, the planned series of meetings between administration and association. And Mike is scheduled to be at those meetings to deliver his interpretations. So that it's a true collaborative process.
Okay. That's, that's good to hear. The air purifiers that are on order, where will those be? Because I saw that they're indicated four. Did they, did you say where they would be placed?
Off the top of my head, I don't know which teachers requested those specifically.
Yeah, so those are requested by teachers based on their needs. I'd rather not go into where. Basically, we received notes that teachers needed them and those are the places where we put them.
So we, we can't say like what classrooms for parents to know if their classroom has an air purifier? Is that secret information?
It's not secret information. I don't have the list of the teachers. I know Colleen received the, the letters.
I have them on my desk. But it's basically just four teachers who had.
They have respiratory concerns and so they've gotten a doctor's note that says that that would help them.
Okay. Which kind of makes me think about, I know teachers obviously have brought this, are able to bring this to attention, but for parents who have children who may have, you know, respiratory, you know, impairments, how is this being communicated to parents besides just posting the report and hear? Is there an opportunity that some outreach should be made for kids maybe who have asthma, who are in the school, who might be more susceptible, maybe that they might need air purifiers in, or in their class?
I, I think in the, the example that you're citing, I would, I would just ask for anyone who has that concern to just follow the, the pipeline of communication as we've worked to establish it. And either start with a building-level administrator or if they're not comfortable reaching out to that building-level administrator, reach out to either our assistant superintendent or our superintendent with those concerns to, to, to start that conversation.
Okay. So parents should just contact Mary Beth or Donna and start there. Okay?
I think, I think that's the most efficient process.
Okay.
I like what Aaron said about investigating better filters for all rooms. I think, did you say it was the second to last bullet point? I, I wouldn't know the cost. I'm, I wouldn't know the cost in analysis, you know, Erin and Michelle will look at that, but I'd rather solve it for everyone?
I like that idea as well, that because of long term.
Rather than like, the idea of plugging in a bunch of air conditioners that are, they're air purifiers, but you get my meaning? Like if the air conditioners are draining the electrical pole, then this, you know, I don't think that that's a good solution, right? Like we have four and that's fine, but if we have 24, I don't know what that's gonna mean, right? So, I want the people who know to come back to us and say, alright, we need to invest this because this, you know, we, you know, we believe, based on this science, it's gonna take the particles, I'll just use words I don't know, to a different level. I mean, at the same time, we still stand, stand behind the statement that there's not a health problem, but we're trying to be responsive, right? So, it's a balancing act.
Right.
You want to do things, but, I want to make smart decisions, right? Cause we don't want to put a bunch of money into a bunch of standalone units that maybe there's a better solution.
And I, I don't think like, putting them in all the classes, I'm, you know, thinking like at the school, the nurse would have knowledge of who, like, kids have an inhaler, possibly. So, target ones that we know of, not necessarily sending email, like, do you think your kid's room needs an, you know, a, a purifier, but there are some, some children that we have knowledge of who, so that, and waiting for them to ask, I think, is maybe not the best approach?
I mean, I think anyone who's concerned with their child's health in their classroom should immediately contact their teacher, you know, and if you think, and if you know these folks and I, I happen not to, encourage them to keep, you know, to bring it to someone that can help them.
Okay.
But that's, like, that's to solve it, you know what I mean?
Yeah, no, I appreciate that. And the other recommendation about cleaning was mentioned, says that high spore, there's going to be auto scrub, cleaning with bleach solution.
Mm-hmm.
Is that an ongoing process or was that like a one-time?
Ongoing.
It's ongoing, and so that process of using a bleach solution was, was recommended?
Correct.
And, and part of?
Correct. So, that was, it was, it was something that we already do.
Okay.
We have a, we have a chemical-
Oh, that's an, that wasn't added, that was an ongoing-
Yeah, a lot of the, a lot of the things that are listed are, are regular activities that we already take, right? And then the report specifies some recommendations, so I've listed those additional recommendations. Some areas we did extra cleaning, right? Because we found that were, those areas had higher levels than the room target next door, right? So, we want to take action on those and ensure that we're doing our due diligence to make sure that we're maintaining the, the healthiest and safe environment that we can. And again, you know, there, nothing in the report shows that any area, or that the indoor air quality at Green Meadow School contributes to any adverse health effects.
Okay.
So, I want to make, you know, just continue-
No, I, I, I heard you there and I'm not insulating yea or nay, I'm just trying to gather-
A lot of these, a lot of these, a lot of the, a lot of the actions that we're taking are kind of like above and beyond to be more proactive, right? There's obviously, you know, there's a lot of people here to hear, I don't know if they're all here to, for this topic or not, but I've, I've talked to a lot of people about it, right? Obviously, they're, it, it's at the forefront, so, just want to make sure that, you know, it's clearly communicated, a lot of these things we're doing are just to be more proactive. Again, I go back to the fact that it's an old building, right? If you look at the HVAC system that's in that building and compare it to the brand of high school, right, it, they're literally decades apart, right? You have a number of air exchanges, we have smart rooms that, that can monitor the level of carbon monoxide in the room and turn on the air conditioning system because there's, it senses that a lot of people are in there breathing, where you don't have the agreement of school, you could have stagnant air. Somebody doesn't turn on the Univent system to get some fresh air movement or, or open up a window, it's gonna continue to feel like a, a musty, hot room. But at high school, you have smart rooms that automatically kick on, a lot of these newer buildings, new HVAC systems are more accommodating to people's comfort, right? Automatically, and it just, that's why I go back to, it's an old building and it's not as gonna be as comfortable as some of these newer buildings.
Is there any type of, you know, Green Meadows reaching its end of life quickly? And is there any type of collaboration with teacher or parent, like a committee about as far as what steps are happening or long-term goals of when these big issues coming up, so people can get visibility into the actions that are happening on an ongoing basis? Because I feel like right now, the information is like, oh, like the, the bleach, we do that all the time, like, no one really knows what's happening on an ongoing basis to really understand the efforts that are happening, but seem to only come up when, you know, we have these issues that arise. I mean, I'm just a fan of collaboration in any way, I feel like it solves a lot of problems when people feel reassured into visibility of, oh, this is happening, and sometimes it just kind of de-escalates the situation, so I, you know, would advocate if there's an opportunity that it be considered.
That's a good thought.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Megan Cortler. Hi Erin. Erin spent a lot of time with me in the fall to talk about this issue, so, I really appreciate this document, because I think this is a lot of questions, a lot of parents have what's, what's been happening in the details. So, I guess two things stand out that make talking about this now different than we were talking about in the fall, is that in the fall, we were talking about it in terms of like a single health concern from one employee, and so, then reading the report by the association and the surveys of the teachers gave a completely different, you know, picture in terms of the health concerns. So, can you guys speak to that? Can you speak to that at all? I mean, do you, do you still consider that to be a single, a single health incident?
I, um, do you want me to speak? Yeah, so I can speak to it, so that, so, this initially was brought forward, right? Back to bullet point number one, nine-six, a staff member at Green Meadow notified the principal they had an individual health issue related to a possible mold exposure. Uh, so, it was just that, right? Without going into too many health details and, and violating any, it was just that, right? So, somebody brought forward, so, immediately, the superintendent kind of stepped up, contacted myself, we started discussing, investigating to address that single issue. After that, it kind of spread, right? People, we, you know, he did a notification to the public, more people got involved.
Concerns spread.
Concerns spread, concerns spread, thank you.
Yeah, you heard more, more-
But that was it, we didn't have any other initial concerns or complaints until more people just started talking about that one individual's issue, right? We wanted to make sure that there wasn't a health concern and there wasn't a mold exposure issue with the Green Meadow, which we confirmed quickly with the Department of Public Health. After that, I can't really, I don't know if I'm the appropriate person to speak to the communications with the stadium anymore.
I'll say something, I'll say something in case we get in trouble, because I don't mind. I will say, because I don't think it's clear and Erin is being very cautious, there's no proof that anyone's health issue was connected to Green Meadow, it's just that the person has a health issue. They spend a large number of their life outside of Green Meadow, don't take that as meaning or feeling for that person, but if we had any inkling that there's a connection, like the Department of Public Health would shut us down, just to be just, I just want to like really put a point on that. You know, we've all had kids or still have kids at Green Meadow, like, I get it, like, this is like every parent's worst nightmare, there's a lot of, well, we have a lot of them, right? But this is a big one, but there's absolutely no evidence connecting a health concern to that building, legit, like, I'm, I'm not misspeaking.
No, no, no.
I may not be able to say it, but I'm not misspeaking.
No, and, and I'd just like to add, Dawn, that even with that-
Right.
Right away from day one, you know, we talked to our association, we agreed to keep, you know, looking for whatever we can find, we're trying to set up a meeting, but it's busy because of everybody's schedules, so that we can meet the author of the report. In the recommendation, he said, if there were teachers who felt they needed the air purifiers and could provide a doctor's note, we could, we would do that for them. We've done that, so, you know, based on the recommendations that the author wrote, we're doing what he's recommending based on that survey, and we're interested in meeting with him and talking more about any ideas he has, because he has, you know, expertise in this area, so, you know, we're gonna do whatever we can to help our staff and our students have the best environment we possibly can do in, in an old building.
And just one follow-up point, this doesn't really touch on what you were saying, but when we commissioned the reports in September, one of the jobs that we had to do in the superintendent's office and that Bob and his team jumped on, because we didn't know what the results were gonna be, right, is he has backup plans on where we can move the preschool on the entire campus, where we can move the kindergarten, like, if we ever got a bad result, we can immediately move everyone. Like, we can be like, starting tomorrow, your class is at Fowler, starting tomorrow, your class is at the high school, like, nobody wants to do it that way, but like, I just want people, to your point Natasha about reassurance, I don't know that we need to send a proactive email saying if any of the buildings are ever sick, we have plans, but we do, thankfully, because we didn't know in September, like, what the results were gonna be. So, just so you know, like, I don't want people to think we assumed we would get a positive result. I mean, I'm still hoping we don't have to move everyone, but that's why we're meeting, you know, we're gonna meet next Tuesday and we're gonna move forward, but, you know, health and safety of our staff and students isn't it definitely number one?
Yeah, I mean, if it was just the oldest wing and it was, you know, the six classrooms, it would be really tight to move those six classrooms here or move a grade level, we probably wouldn't move those six, but, you know, it would be tight to move a grades level here, but we figured out where there's their room. Heaven forbid if it was ever deemed that that building was unsafe, we would have to do what the most drastic thing school districts do, which is called double sessions, I don't know if you're familiar with double sessions, they're not pleasant, but we could move the whole Green Meadow here and they would go to school from five in the morning till noon, and then from noon till six would be the Fowler student, age students. So, we, you know, we always look into what the worst-case scenario is and we, you know, have that in the back of our mind, we'd hate to have to do something like that, but those are the options that you would have available if you really, you know, maybe the consultant's gonna come and meet with us and say, oh yeah, you have to, you know, close the building down, but I don't think, that's not what we got from the Department of Public Health and as Erin always reminds me, they're the highest authority in this area, so, they would have told us to go to double sessions if we had to.
Well, they, yeah, they would have, they could have come in and said, you need to-
Close the building down.
You need to close this wing, and that was, again, just going into the whole idea of like waiting for the report results, we just, we didn't know at the times.
Yeah, the, the DPH advises against doing mold studies and air quality assessments for just this fact, right? It's a gray area and it's a lot of, it, it, you know, it's not straightforward, right?
Yeah, I, I, we talked about that and I understand gray areas and not having guide, clear guidelines, I just wonder, how would they deem, if, if they don't recommend, if they recommend against testing for air quality in the way that we did to make sure that, you know, we, we were being, you know, we had, we were being diligent, then how would they determine?
So, she did air quality testing, she did air quality testing.
She tested the-
They specifically were recommended against testing for mold.
So, so it was relative humidity and-
Correct.
Carbon dioxide and things that contribute to the conditions that mold grows?
Correct.
Yeah.
So, the Department of Public Health inspector inspected for just those things.
Okay.
And she found that there was no, it was in a normal level and not an elevated risk, and that was, that's detailed in the first report that was shared with the public.
Right.
She specifically recommended against testing for mold spores, which was the original concern of the original, that started this whole situation.
So, I'm glad to know that there is gonna be a meeting with the author of the most recent report, and I was wondering what is gonna be shared publicly from that meeting and when?
I, I think we need to have the meeting-
Yeah.
Before we can talk about what might or might not be shared publicly, because we just, we don't know what direction it's gonna go, and, you know, I think you've heard from multiple people here in the room that if something pops up that we need to respond to, that A, we'll respond to it, and then we've heard that we need to communicate that to members of the community, so we'll figure out what that look like, if and when the time comes.
But if we decided on, on a different action plan or something, like, that's easy. I think what Justin's referring to also is a lot of times when we meet with the unions, and you hate to say it like this, but like management and the unions, because I don't, I don't like any of that, but like, it's all protected, right? Like, you couldn't come, you couldn't say, I want to join.
Right.
You know, like, they have their rights, which is, which is great, to have a private meeting with their employers, but if something comes out of it that's easily shareable and not, you know, to, similar to how we don't want to name a teacher who has a health concern, we just want to, you know, give them their privacy. But yeah, I mean, if something legit comes out of it that's very straightforward, then we would certainly make that available.
I said it the first time we talked about it, I said it the second time we talked about it, I'll say it again tonight, our desire is to be open and honest and transparent, and oftentimes, there are members of the community that come back to us later and say, we think you could have done this differently, and we listen to that and we try to do it better the next time. So, I think in this case, we need to have the meeting, we need to figure out what, if anything, needs to be done, and if there's information that needs to be communicated, we will do our best to get it out to the people who need to know it.
Yeah, so, reading the reports, and I don't, I mean, I would imagine, they're lengthy, I imagine like a lot of people don't have the time to sit down and read, you know, three lengthy reports, a lot of parents, I would assume, and so, they rely on the communication, and so, when the communication says, you know, the overarching theme is like, no mold was found, and then we look at the reports and we say, but wait a minute, it says, you know, there's high levels of this type and it's very technical, to Natasha's point, it, it's confusing to, to, to say, well, wait a minute, there is mold, and then when you look and you do your own research and you say, okay, but I understand that there's no black mold found and that's, would be, you know, the worst-case scenario and I understand that, but there's different types of mold, and if they are growing inside the building, you know, it's, that's, that is still, that's still a problem. So, I just think maybe we need some more nuanced communication, so that, you know, parents that are busy, that aren't looking at the reports, they can't, they don't have time, they're looking at the headline, they're looking at the subject, saying, I, I don't have a problem, I don't have to put my attention there.
Right.
So, you know, luckily, we can come here and you guys, that we can talk about it further.
Did you find Erin's too much?
Yes, this-
I found Erin's right out, much easier to follow.
This was exactly what I was gonna ask for. So, I really appreciate that and I appreciate the update on the technology, we talked about that, like work orders and having visibility into the process. One thing that I had a question about was root cause analysis in terms of like, how did we get here, in terms of like procedures and policies and moving forward and changing, changing those and understanding, especially with the new, implementing a new system, you know, is there an effort to try to figure out how we can, how we can avoid getting to the point of needing a lot of reactionary, you know, cleaning and maintenance?
Yeah, so, I would say in this situation, you know, I go back to the situations the same as it was day one, that we've confirmed that there's not a health issue, right, related to the Green Meadow. So, I mean, I'd say that would be like a debrief probably between myself, Dr. Girardi and some members of the school committee and maybe in, in some members from the, of the teachers that were originally involved in the concern and debriefing and figuring out and doing the, you know, the five why and the root cause, but I go back to the fact that we've confirmed the fact that it was not a, a public health issue in the building, and, you know, we've had, it's taken us five months now to state that, right, and we've, we've taken actions to, to improve some air quality, to assure the public, to further maintain, but the conditions are very similar today than it was when this whole situation started.
And I think, to your question, right, Megan, was also practices put in place, so, when I first came to Maynard about seven and a half years ago, we were real, as a school, the, the school committee was very excited because they had hired a facilities manager. Before that, they didn't even have a facilities manager, and a lot of the buildings suffered in Maynard because of that. And so, some of the things that he put in place were some of those early rotations of doing the filters, is it three times a year, Erin, currently? And he put in paper reports, so, the custodians would write down, you know, February vacation, we replaced all these, so, there was a paper process put in place probably seven years ago. Now, we're hearing that there'll be an electronic process, which will be that much better. So, as time goes on, things have improved in Maynard, so, I don't know if that helps to answer that question, that, I don't think there was, I think that long before a lot of us were here, on the board or in our jobs, people realized things need to improve and they've been improving, and there have been procedures put in place and they're getting better. I don't know if that helps.
I also think, just from a big picture perspective, that, that old Green Meadow wing compared to even just Fowler and obviously the high school is just so outdated, so, just my personal not knowing anything about complex stuff, it just has to be harder to, not to do the work, but just sort of, it's just not as easy to do it as it is in Fowler and the high school, they're just more online, more connected, more systems, so I feel like we, I really do feel like we have good systems in place for the high school and Fowler, but this wing in Green Meadow is just, I think it's more, you need eyes on things, you need good reporting systems, and you need accountability. You know, you need to have follow-up. You know, if someone makes a request, we need to make sure that if it's legit, and it usually is, that it's followed up on. And those are some of the things that I know that we're focusing on from a management standpoint. I don't know if that answers your question, but.
No, that, yeah, it's helpful.
But yeah, I mean, nobody wants this to happen in the next building. Nobody wants it to happen anymore. So we're always.
I really do think the work plan piece, what we're finding, teachers didn't realize that they should speak up or that it wasn't clear that there was like an issue with something in their room. So that was one of the things that seemed to come up. So being able to have that, so that rather than having one trigger point that then brings out other, brings other things to the surface, there are ways, clear pathways for them to be able to, to say when something's going on in their room and so that there's something that it can be dealt with. I think the first.
I just wanted to say, too, in reference to the, the software that we're going to be using, not only can a teacher request, but they'll also get feedback and also they'll know when the work order is completed. It also has a preventative maintenance feature to it as well, which sets up work orders on, on everybody's, whoever's job it would be. So that, you know, things are, are clearly marked at dates that they need to be done and then they have to mark them that they're done too. So it, it's like an all encompassing maintenance plan.
That's great. That's my, that's my wheelhouse. So I'm glad that that's, that's happening.
You specialize in all encompassing maintenance?
No, just implementing, implementing systems to replace paper and, and manufacturing and service level. Yeah. So anyway, that's not really relevant. But, so I just wanted, two, two last things. Are there, are, is, is this type of information like going to continue to be shared in terms of the future items, like dates around when the decision is going, if it's to be made about roof and improved filters and et cetera, moving forward?
We could certainly do an update in our, in one of our meetings. I think that's more than reasonable. I would have to talk to Dr. Girardi and the other members of the administration as far as what the communication might look like. I don't know that it's really social media appropriate necessarily, but perhaps a, an email to the staff and the students in that particular community, I think is certainly warranted. But it would be something that we just, we need to figure out what that looks like. But I think it's more than a reasonable idea.
And I just want to clarify that when, when you say that there's no public health concern, that there's, that it's a safe building and there's no health concern, that is based on the Department of Public Health coming in and saying that? Is that, is that the position? Okay. Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Megan.
Hi, I'm Jess Teague. I have two kids at Green Meadow, a preschooler and a first grader, both with asthma. And I'm a scientist. I'm an immunologist and microbiologist. So I know a little bit about this. Mold isn't my particular forte. But I can tell you a lot about how the immune system responds to it. I can tell you that it's wonderful that there is no black mold. That is very good news. But just because there are no standards for acceptable levels of mold, doesn't mean that's safe. It's just they haven't determined what safe is. They haven't done a careful analysis. They haven't had peer reviewed studies. But that doesn't mean it's safe. There's a statistically significantly higher than normal level of self-reported asthmatic symptoms from teachers and parents in that school, particularly in our most vulnerable wing of our most vulnerable kids, the preschoolers and the kindergartners. If it's not mold, what is it? There's something wrong that needs to be addressed. This isn't safe for our teachers. It isn't safe for our children.
Thank you.
Nicola Joakim. To follow that, I don't understand why you wouldn't want to survey those kindergartners, those preschoolers, those kids that are in that wing. I also don't understand why there was a kindergarten classroom moved out of that wing, but now all students are flowing through that classroom. But those are the things that aren't made transparent. And so it makes you wonder what is being hidden. Why is that happening? You can roll your eyes, but it doesn't make sense. There's not transparency, Justin.
So, yes, I, I closed my eyes and I shook my head for a moment. I have students, I have a child in that building also. I have another child with a significant health issue that went through that building. I'm not dismissing the concerns and I'm agreeing with most of everything that's being said tonight. What I'm saying is, I have to stand on the science. We've had three independent, separate reports that are saying that the air quality, there's, there's no indoor air quality concern. There's, so when I come back to it, like, we're trying to do everything that we can. And yes, if you, if you think it's a good idea to survey the kindergartners and the preschoolers that are in that wing, then that's something that we can have a conversation about. But I just.
At least then, those parents can go to their pediatricians and say, what can I do?
Okay.
Can I just, some of the things, and that's frustrating for parents as well as for everybody, the community, there are some things, when we talk about moving classrooms or teachers, specific health concerns, that they have HIPAA rights. We can't talk about why classrooms are moved. We can't talk about some of those things. So it's not intentionally being, I guess it is intentionally not sharing that information with you because we're not allowed to because of, of the law. We can't share, that's why there are people here where we were talking, we can't share. It's hard for us to share which classrooms are going to have the air purifiers, because we don't want to identify people's health issues because of our employees.
But what I'm saying is you have, and it's been said, our most vulnerable students, our littlest ones, they don't know why they don't feel well. They don't know why they're sick. They're not going to, they're not going to advocate for themselves. And yet, if we're not asking parents, do they have these symptoms? Are they sick a lot? I've got two little boys. And if they're sick, well, they're sick. It's, you know, it's winter. Everybody's touching everything, like, no big deal. But if you've got this repeatedly and parents don't know that there's, oh, hey, look, like, they could be in a room that they're having a reaction to. Well, that's not, you know, trying to read these reports. It doesn't say, oh, look, Mrs. so-and-so's classroom, it's this one. You have to go into the school. You have to figure out which classroom is seven, whatever, and do that research. But it's not being put out there so that parents can kind of put the puzzle together and say, oh, hey, look, maybe it's my kid going to school every day that's making them sick. That's where I think we should have transparency. That's what I'm saying. Like, it doesn't make sense that a classroom was moved, but nobody was told why, or now there's more kids going through that classroom.
What I'm saying is I legally can't tell you whose class was moved or why it was moved. And being in a small town, it's usually pretty easy for people to figure that out. But I can't share my employees' health concerns. It's against, it's a HIPAA violation.
But you could send out an email saying, hey, these are the things that we're seeing a higher level of in Green Meadow. If your child has this, like, maybe we should talk.
I guess the thing that I'm seeing is that we're doing, so I also have a child from Green Meadow. I have another one that just finished being at Green Meadow. So what I'm trying to understand is, I, I hear what you're saying, that you have a concern that there's something we don't know about or understand that is causing more.
Nope. That it's, certain kids are having this.
I, I, I do want to just say one point and then do you want to hear what you have to say. So don't forget that.
Mm-hmm.
So, everything that's been happening beyond the DPH report, I also understand that coming from a researcher background in a different area, but also having a public health degree in social behavioral, so nothing particularly to do with environmental stuff. But I've been exposed to some of the basic principles at a graduate level of work. So I understand the science and what the science is lacking. And that's the reason that we're doing all the other proactive steps to try to do whatever we can to make sure the building is clean, to make sure that there's no, none of the potential issues, anything that could potentially cause some of these problems are being addressed. So they're going, everything that you're seeing that are continuing activities are already above and beyond. So I'm trying to understand, within this, this being proactive because we don't know and we want to do the most we can to try to help make sure. Because even though DPH said, don't do it, we just said, we don't care, because we, we care about the students. We, we're not going to listen to you saying, don't go any further, because we, we feel like we need to. These are, we, we agree with you. They're the, we need to make sure that, that people are getting taken care of. So what, what else is there that you're feeling like we, isn't happening?
I don't think parents, I mean, unless you are reading through the bulk of it, you're not understanding what is in these reports. And the reactions, the asthma, the respiratory, you have, you, you wouldn't put it together just by reading the headlines that, hey, maybe my kid's classroom is what's making them sick.
Why don't we?
Does that make sense?
Yes. And I don't mean to interrupt you. But Bob, why don't we take as an action item, you and I, to think about some messaging out? I think that, and I, I'm usually faster than this. I just don't feel well.
That would be lovely.
Yeah, no, no, it's, it's, I don't think anyone disagrees.
But unless you're reading the headlines.
Oh, and, yeah, no, it's totally.
And it's 150 pages.
And part of our, part of our job is obviously to be proactive with our communication. So if it's okay with you, I, you know, I think it's, I've been very involved, just, and I can work with Dr. Girardi and just sort of think about some messaging with Aaron's input as well. So I think anytime we have a community concern, that we should be on top of our messaging. So.
Thank you.
I appreciate that. Sorry, usually I'm quicker.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Lydia Clancy. So I just have two things. One is, we recently, or we, you guys recently talked about how the level of school absences was problematic and the state was coming down on Maynard for the number of absences or the percentage of absences. And that you wanted parents to minimize unnecessary absences. And this could maybe be a source of some of the absences. And so even if it's found not to relate to the mold, if there is a higher than average incidence of respiratory issues among the teachers and the children, then chances are there might be an issue that needs to be addressed. And just because it doesn't show up on a mold report, doesn't mean that there's, isn't something else. And the second thing that I wanted to say, or ask, is what about the asbestos in the schools? Like, when was the last time the pipe wrappings were investigated or inspected? And could any of that, I don't know, cause any of these issues?
So just one thing on your first comment, and then I'll turn to Aaron for your more technical question. I just want to make it very clear that Maynard is not in any trouble with the state over attendance.
It was just a general thing that they're doing with all the states now, that they're starting to take absences into account when they.
For the state accountability.
Yeah, I mean, we had, we had a number of parents in the community who were taken to court over truancy, but that's a family problem. So asbestos.
Yeah. So the school district is required to comply with the, the HARA standards. And we do a asbestos white survey at all public schools every three years. The last one was 2018. So we, yeah, we do have that.
Thank you.
Yep.
All right, moving on. Fincom, you have the floor.
Welcome. So Ken, I saw Ken somewhere. Bob?
Ken somewhere. Oh, here comes Ken. Ken, it's your turn now.
Thank you, Aaron.
Thank you.
Thanks, Aaron.
Good night.
No, you were just at the CPC.
Yeah, you can just take it apart. That's, if you need help.
I think it's, I think Chuck sent out an email that attendance yields good test scores. Yeah, that was, that was like, that was fake news. Yeah, that's why I corrected it. Oh, yeah, yeah. But that has nothing to do with Green Meadow. Yeah, no, that's, I don't often. Oh, sure. Oh, yeah. But we're not in trouble.
All right. So, I'm sorry. So I'd just like to go ahead and get started. For the benefit of those who don't know me, my name is Ken Estabrook. I chair the Towns Finance Committee. And so we're here to, I'll talk to you about the long range budget planning process. So the role of Finance Committee is really to, we're appointed by the Town Moderator to act on behalf of the, the Town Meeting Voters. One of the ways we do that is to take a look at anything that's on the Town Meeting warrant, make recommendations. Another way to do that is taking a look at the Town's budget in between as an independent party. And so we've been working together. I appreciate the opportunity to sort of expand the discussion beyond what we have been doing so far on the, the Town's Budget Subcommittee. Again, just for a little background, the Town Budget Subcommittee's been running for a couple of years now and comprises two members from the Board of Selectmen. And Justine is, was here. And Justine St. John and David Gavin are the members for the Board of Selectmen. And then, of course, the School Committee represented by Mary and Dawn as well. And then Bob, McCarthy and I are on it from the Finance Committee. And so we've been working on this, the Budget Subcommittee, to try to develop a long range budget planning process. And we've tried to accomplish some things on that. So first, what we wanted to do was build on the historical data that we already have in place. And rather than starting with a completely different thing, make sure that it dovetailed well with that. Fortunately, both Bob and Peter Campbell, who's here, have been longtime members of the Finance Committee and were very helpful along that line. Another thing that we were wanting to do was broaden the picture beyond just, you know, individual pieces of the budget. So the, you know, the schools or DPW or whatever, and be able to take a broader view. And really not even look just at the expenses, but also on the revenue side. And so, of course, we're aware that 129 Parker Street is, is coming in and going to add money into the Town's coffers. As Kate said, it's not going to solve our problem by any stretch. But if we're looking at the, the revenue side of that, that'd be beneficial as well. Third thing we were trying to do was make sure that whatever long range process that we have integrated with the short range picture that we do each year, as we're looking at the next fiscal year's budget. And then finally, we also wanted to come up with a process and a tool that would help us to sort of communicate and provide a, a better illustration. And so we're here to talk about that, that tool. With me, as I said, is Bob McCarthy, Peter Campbell here, and Tom Black. Those are four of the seven members. And so we're here tonight. So Peter's going to run through an explanation of the mechanics. And the mechanics mostly is a spreadsheet here that he's going to run through. And he promised to bump it up, the, the font size for the benefit of those who need our readers from the back. Then, so he's going to talk about the mechanics of the budget planning, long range budget planning framework spreadsheet that we have. Then Bob is going to come in and run through a scenario to show sort of how it works. And so with that, I'm going to turn it over to Peter.
Hi, Bob. Can you, uh, yeah, I don't know if I need, if I need this or not, but, okay. I don't know if the school committee can see this. Okay. So the idea is we wanted a tool that you could play various scenarios out to see the long-term impacts of budget decisions that we make. So this spreadsheet follows the model of the Town Budget that the Town Administrator and the Board of Selectmen use. You'll note there's FY19 in there and the FY20 budget. This is the budget that has gone to the Selectmen. Still, there's a fair amount of review. And, you know, Selectmen have to approve it. Fincom has to review it, but it's a starting point. We really wanted to start looking a few years out to get an eye for impact of changes that we make. So as a starting point, we are going out four years from next year's budget. So it's really five years from the current budget. And I wanted to put, build a spreadsheet basically that, you know, and I'll send you guys copies of this spreadsheet, that you can play out your own scenarios. You can decide, okay, we need schools to go up by 10% a year. What's the impact of that? We, you know, we do a $2 million override. What's the impact of that? We get, you know, a bunch of new growth, whatever it is. I'm hoping you'll be able to put it into this spreadsheet and make it work. So the spreadsheet basically builds off the FY2020 numbers that are in here. And I've included percentages in this column that you can change and it'll change it for all the years. You can overwrite subsequent years if you want to change stuff. But it, you know, starts with the idea, we're going to say, okay, 5% for the next four years. So just running through this, the first part of this is income to the town. You know, we're assuming we're going to take the whole 2.5% of the 2.5%. Debt exclusions, this is, you know, stuff that's been passed as a debt exclusion, like the high school. We have state aid in here. One factor that I know you're aware of is increasingly, we are having large deductions from state aid because of charter schools. It's gone up somewhat dramatically over the last few years. You can put in a percentage growth here. I don't know what the right assumption is. Historically, you know, it's been almost 30%, I think, over the last few years. I think we at FinCom really hope it doesn't stay that high. But you can put in what you want here. So if you want to put in 30%, it'll play it out, and all of a sudden, we have huge deficits in the future. Just for ease, the numbers across the top, the negative 4.6 million, that is the bottom, you know, net number, income less expenses. So, you know, under this scenario playing out, we have a $4.6 million deficit in FY2024 we need to figure out. But let's reduce that a bit for now. School choice is also, school choice is also in here. We're not presuming any increase now, but you can put an increase in. We don't individually increase any of the state aid lines. They all stay static, so general government just stays static. From prior years, you know, we generally can estimate, you know, barring some dramatic change, a 3% increase in local aid. So we've just added that as a line at the bottom. And, you know, if you want to say the state's gonna be generous, you can play that out. Local receipts, again, we've budgeted fairly statically. If you want to say we're gonna come up with some, you want to put marijuana tax in there, and it's gonna be some dramatic increase in local receipts, you can try that. School construction reimbursement, that's for Fowler, and you'll note it drops off in 2024, when it's over. Bond premium, and this last line is transfer from other funds, is reimbursements from water in the sewer department. These are all numbers from Mike. We're not particularly playing with those and don't think it's fair to say, oh, we'll just jack up transfers in order to cover the budget.
Mike Guzzo.
Uh, Mike Guzzo, sorry, yes. We then go to expenses. You can play out different scenarios here. So, you know, we're starting with a scenario saying the kind of the general government for town grows at 2%.
Do you want to explain the main accounts that we use on the left?
Yeah, you'll get down, so in expenses, you know, the same way we do at-town meeting, we break down the town budget into various categories.
Is that the show?
I think I've...
Oh, it's just that, yeah.
Sorry? So general government is town hall, public safety, police, fire, public works, culture and recreation is primarily the library, education, Maynard, education, Assabet, and then some less discretionary accounts, capital, employee benefits, reserve fund, and PEG, which is the cable money. So if you want to say, you know, we're gonna try growing only by 1%, you can then see the effect of that in the deficits at the top. If you want to say, you know, we really need to bump up schools to grow by 10%, you can see the effect of the deficits at the top, how this is all gonna play out. Again, yeah, you can play with, you know, any scenario you want to do this and see the effect.
The revenue side scenario, which would be...
Yeah, increasing revenue.
If we were going to, if we're gonna sell marijuana, if we're going to have a big development in, if we're gonna do anything, but these, of course, are effects, the revenue effects tend to be on the...
The capital lines, I don't have any adjustment built in. I do have a line for the fire station. It's blank right now, but it's been articulated as a town need. Employee benefits, this is an estimate. It's, you know, a pretty large one, and it's a large piece of the budget. There's some way we can drive that down. That may help. PEG access, I have a percentage in here for growth. This really is just, this expense line is exactly equal to the money we're getting from, I forget what PEG stands for, but it's the money from the cable companies. And it, so increasing this or decreasing this, you know, there'd be a corresponding increase or decrease in revenue, and there really wouldn't be a net effect on the budget. So, so then you come up with total expenses. We do have to add in the overlay assessment, which is to refund property taxes, and then we come up with the net. Again, I've transferred the net to the top of the spreadsheet, so it's just easy to see as you're playing with scenarios. So, you know, it's not a perfect tool. We looked at a couple, you know, one from Lincoln is incredibly complex, and we're quite, not quite there yet. Saw one from Arlington that also was quite complex. But as far as this tackling the operating budget and, you know, trying to look at what is the effect of new growth or an override or, you know, I don't know, cutting, you wanna cut the police department, put it in, see what happens.
So I'm gonna let Bob run through...
Yeah, you wanna try?
Sure. It's really, I really think it's neat the way it's customizable. So the example you used, the marijuana sales, right now, you don't know what revenue that could bring in, so that's static. After three years, you can have trends.
And then this can project the trends. So I think it's really neat the way you can project positive or negative revenue, you know, going up or down, and the same thing with expenses. I just think it's very customizable. I really think it's very impressive.
Well, I think on the revenue side, one of the four things is, you know, people have different views on 129 Parker Street, but there's black and white impact in terms of what happens on the revenue side if you have that project or don't have that project, and the same for other projects. So Bob, why don't you go ahead and explain your...
Okay, sure. You all will be amused to, you know, know that we actually thought this was gonna be a one-pager when we started. And you can print this on a legal-size one-page. Honestly, you can. And basically, you get a look, and we've shared this at the Budget Subcommittee, at all the revenue, all the expenses, and the bottom line, which we actually put on the top line, as you can see. We really think that we need to be doing this year to year to year, and that every time we go to locate our next year's fiscal year budget, we need to think about, is it time to do the fire station? Is it time to do, I guess, Green Metal School? Because that might be one coming up that I heard about tonight. We need some kind of a planning tool, and really, four years isn't, or five years, isn't really enough, but it's a start at having some idea where we know that we can have some confidence, yes, 129 Parker revenue's gonna come. It may not come all at once, but it's, it's in that five-year window now. And it's in somewhere in the, let's be conservative, $500,000 range to a $1 million range. So when you see the impacts, sorry, I'm kinda standing right in the way of it, of, you know, when we put in $500,000 this year and then $300,000 in tax revenue, it'll be, it won't be that clean, right? But when those impacts come in, their revenue for the next year's coming. But every year, we need more and more, a bigger percentage to make up these deficits. So the idea is, and Peter didn't say it, but I know what he wants to do is to update this for what Greg Johnson and the town administrator has just...
He is updating.
He is, you already did it?
Yes, I did it while we were hanging out. So FY2020 is at zero right now.
Is that off... I wasn't even looking at it. So...
Peter, is that off the most recent cherry sheet?
I, no, it is not the most, I don't think Greg had the most recent cherry sheet. Because, yeah, I looked at it, I think this charter school is up to 890 or something, and it's not, I don't have that reflected here.
That just came out yesterday afternoon.
Yeah, exactly.
I'm sorry?
The latest cherry sheet was just in yesterday afternoon.
Yeah, just, I'm wondering what the entry point in our conversation is.
So we'll give you, we'll cut you some slack.
Yeah.
I wasn't trying to split hairs, just wondering where the...
No, no, it is not the most recent cherry, but that won't be the final anyway, so...
No, of course not.
Sorry.
So we know this is really scintillating, and really, everybody's dying. If they scroll down, please give us the next couple lines. But in the end, what I want to say is, this, every year, by law, has to be zero, right? When we're done, and we put a town vote together in May for our town meeting, that has to be zero. So if we want to be able to say, I'm looking forward, and I know, and Michelle, I don't know if she's left yet, but when she's projecting with you guys, you know, where you want to be, and we're trying to figure out, okay, the fire chief really honestly believes she's gonna come to town meeting this year and maybe ask for what amounts to a bond for $850,000 a year. So for fun, if you don't mind being my stride, let's just do one of these, right? So it's zero now. We know we have a little bit of a struggle every year when we start the budget process. You know, the Budget Subcommittee gets together, and we're a million over, and we start looking at, maybe insurance is gonna commit at 5% instead of 7%, we can get some benefits there. And we get there, but it is a painful process, and as Kate and others said earlier, we don't have the economies of scale to have a lot of flexibility. So every time we have to cut $500,000 from the budget, we're going at something that we really are affecting a service for somebody in town, whether it's schools, town, or other things. So if you go out to, so I'll make one more comment. We have debt retiring from this building, right, that we bonded for in 2023, I believe it is. So once, I'll even take one more step back. Last year at this time, we had a couple meetings, sorry. You do that in your classroom, I've seen you do it. Last year at this time, we got together, we, as a, you know, even earlier than that, the Finance Committee said, what are the three biggest things? Because, you know, you can only deal with three things at a time sometimes, that the town-wide, you know, pressures are putting on the budget. And one of them is school funding, is, you know, we're always struggling for getting to level service budget. And when we're talking about capital infrastructure, you talked about, you know, taking money away from, you know, putting it where we think we really have to have it, because there's a penalty in maintaining our buildings and that sort of thing, and being proactively doing preventive maintenance, and you talked about one of those issues, you know, tonight. I think what we have to do is look at that against the tax rate and the tax bill that people have, and say, what is the, what's affordable? How are we gonna manage this? And when, when you look at these, and we're a small town, and these things are at $2 million above, you know, their deficits, right, above what we have coming in, we have to approach it from both the revenue and the cost-cutting side, and look for different ways than we've done in the past. Because we could easily take this, this baseline of 2020, and we've looked back six years, and we've looked at exactly how we spend the budget, believe it or not, every year, if you did a pie chart, each one of the eight major categories, it looks like more than that, but there's really eight, there's four here, there's two here, and if you consider these, basically, employee benefits and capital costs, those are the, I mean, if you think about it in those terms, there aren't that many things to go, to attack, right? So if we, if we look at how we're gonna do these, these changes, or we put in the fire station when we think we're gonna have some retiring debt, and we put in that $850,000, let's do it, right, starting in FY2023. And you have to, in this case, we don't have a percentage, but... So, so this is, we get a really good bond rating, we've got, you know, we've got a lot of money in our stabilization fund, you know, that we can get low interest rates, but it's still gonna cost us that amount of money for 20 years, actually. And if we want to do the Green Metal School, we've got to factor in, when will this come down enough that we're, our debt isn't so much of our budget that we're in trouble with? Okay? So you don't have to know all of those things. All you have to know is, if you put the money in, you just look at these lines. That's all that really matters. I mean, a lot of this is money coming in, money we have to be going out, and we, we can make, do all kinds of scenarios. You keep one baseline, all of you could take this home, keep one baseline as you're starting from, and then play with one, save it as, what if, scenario A, and then what if, scenario two. But you want to be able to go back to the beginning and say, well, some of this means I have to, you know, close down the fire station entirely. Is that really tenable, right? Can we, can we really afford to do that? Do you want to be the first person to tell the fire station that, you know, you don't have to come to my house if it burns down, right? So, so all you have to remember is that these have to get to zero somehow or some way in the next four years. And then if you can't do that with all the things, you can't add something in as an expense, whether it's for schools, town, facilities, any other service, then we're not gonna be able to balance the budget, so we're gonna have to look at new revenue. Even though we're getting 129 Parker, even though we could do an override, if you put that in, and there are issues about, you know, how much is, how much can we use for overrides? You could put a $1 million override in there now at the same time as you have the debt for the fire station.
Well, if I can play one scenario, just, you know, for interest.
Yep.
So let's say level service, as you guys have talked about it, is more like 8%. So 8% going forward, everything else being equal, that generates an $850,000 deficit for next year that we have to cover. So let's, for round numbers, say we did a $1 million override, and, you know, we want to solve that.
So we're almost there for next year.
Well, that's positive.
Yep.
So we would get there. But one of the things that, you know, looking at this over time points out is, we're still stuck with a $3.5 million deficit three years from now. And I don't think anybody pretends we can do a $1 million override every year. So even, you know, doing an operational override, which, my personal opinion, I think is still quite a stretch to think would be approved, but even if we got it approved, we're, we're really solving one year of an issue, and we need to...
And if we did, not that I'm advocating for it, but if we did it, it would carry through across all the years.
But the math does that.
Because it's an operational one.
The spreadsheet, so we start, the $1 million gets us to $32 million in taxes. That's the starting point for next year. We get 2.5% of the override, so it's built into the spreadsheet to carry forward.
To permanently increase that amount.
Yeah, but...
I just wanted to clarify that.
Yep. So, I mean, it's one of the things you can look at, and, you know, we built this as a tool, not to advocate for anything, but to say, you know, you got an idea? Let's try it out and see what it looks like four years from now.
That's great.
So...
The real hope is, really, we get to, you know, April, and we're getting to be, you know, struggling with the budget, and maybe this year, we won't be there, but we will be in the next couple of years for one reason or another, and we're gonna have to, as a community, do the trade-offs and say, what can we do now, and what would that mean? Rather than, and it's as transparent after, I don't know how many years I've been on this, probably 13, it's really about getting this to zero and being really clear about, this is the revenue we get, we've, we've saved as much we get on expenses everywhere we went. These are the cold hard facts. We're not hiding anything, we're not trying to be stingy. We've gotta get more revenue in order to be able to meet our service needs. So that's the power of the tool, is anyone of you can do it and be as much of an expert as Peter on the budget, once you get used to this. And it really isn't as complex as it looks. You just change a few things, it does all the work for you. So, any questions?
So one thing, I guess two things to add. One, we're looking at a set of graphics that would go along with this, that would give sort of a graphical representation. Obviously, you know, you know, it's, it's sort of daunting when you look at the spreadsheet, and it's a little easier when you see graphical representations, although there's gotta be the, the spreadsheets behind it to drive that. The other thing, I guess, I would point out is, you know, getting to zero in the one year is hard enough, but when you get to zero in that one year, if you look out at the future years, you realize that, you know, you, you've gotta start looking at those, those odd years. And as Peter's pointing out, you can't do that on overrides. The only way we're gonna be able to do this is increasing town revenues, and that really, you know, unless we want to pay more taxes, and none of us do, that means it's gonna be, you know, a thing, you know, increasing revenues through development projects that we have, through the sale of marijuana, and so on and so forth.
Chapter 70 increase, advocacy, that way from state and local, right? as Peter on the budget, once you get used to this. And it really isn't as complex as it looks. You just change a few things, it does all the work for you. So, any questions?
So one thing, I guess two things to add. One, we're looking at a set of graphics that would go along with this, that would give sort of a graphical representation. Obviously, you know, you know, it's, it's sort of daunting when you look at the spreadsheet, and it's a little easier when you see graphical representations, although there's got to be the, the spreadsheets behind it to drive that. The other thing I guess would point out is, you know, getting to zero in the one year is hard enough, but when you get to zero in that one year, if you look out at the future years, you realize that, you know, you, you've got to start looking at those, those out years. And as Peter's pointing out, you can't do that on overrides. The only way we're going to be able to do this is increasing town revenues. And that really, you know, unless we want to pay more taxes, and none of us do, that means it's going to be, you know, a thing, you know, increasing revenues through development projects that we have, through the sale of marijuana, and so on and so forth.
Chapter seventy increase advocacy.
Yeah, advocating for chapter seventy increase.
State and local, right? So my fervent hope after all this time and working a lot of hours on this, isn't to do anything other than to have a communication tool and to have us work together at facing these realities, instead of starting in, you know, February, March, just saying, where's that money? There must be waste, there must be this and that. I mean, this makes it a little bit more, you know, transparent.
I appreciate it too, because I feel like a lot of times, it's, it is part of wrapping my head around, I'm sure that.
I feel like I have been doing this for a while, and, oh, hi, just seen your back. Still, there are things, I'm like, oh, I've heard that, and I'm trying to wrap my head around that concept right now. But what it does show you is that there, we're all still, it's all still interconnected. It's not like the town money versus the school money, and that there, there's trickle effects everywhere, no matter what. And so when we go make a decision in town meeting and vote on one, one piece of request about money, it sounds like a great idea. Yeah, sure, I want to make sure that we have a fire station that works, and I'm not advocating that, I'm just using it as an example because it's been coming up, or not advocating it one way or the other. But saying that there's a lot to consider and, and to try to understand as far as the full picture. And this just helps to understand a little bit of the layers of it and the complexity, to realize that there's a bigger picture as we make these decisions as each individual citizen and vote and make the trade offs. They're going to, I mean, they could be hard, they're going to be hard.
Could you scroll down to the expenses for a second? I mean, one of the things, if you say, if I really wanted to think proactively about the long term, and not many people do, by the way, but we have to, and I decided, all right, let's just put, let's put zeros here, right? Or maybe, maybe even negative two percent, you know, and look to see, does it fix it?
Barely makes a dent.
I want everybody to really look at that for a minute. General Government, Public Safety, Public Works, Culture and Recreation, those Culture and Recreation people, they're so expensive. You just can't make it up by cutting everywhere else and, and giving all of that to education and our employee benefits, right? Because that's what we share together. It's still a problem. So if you go home depressed, and I don't want you to be depressed, this is, this is power. This is taking some, some power in our own hands and understanding what we're up against and focusing our energies in the right place. We've got to have, you know, better advocacy for the state, we've got to have better advocacy for, you know, some of the state funds, we've got to do something about, a lot of folks go into charter schools. It's a big, big number. I mean, that five percent, if we really put in thirty percent, which is what we've been doing, I mean, it has to plateau, right? We hope so. I mean, how do we, are all our kids going to go to AMSA? I sure hope not, right?
They can't.
But we've got to do something together to stem that tide.
Or if you cut it ten percent a year.
What?
If you cut it ten percent a year.
That would really, really help.
Makes a big difference.
Or try.
So a lot to digest. It really is, can be, I promise you, it will have a grasp that go with it if you'd like to look at it that graphically. I think it does help. It can be printed out, it can't be presented on a monitor this size very easily, but it is a digestible tool that you can play with if you're so interested. Certainly.
And you can always come to a finance committee meeting.
No one ever does, so we really welcome your attendance.
So just to sort of close up the, the discussion here, the tool, while it will continue to evolve, and, you know, one primary way is the graphical representation, but we're continuing to refine the numbers and the, and the mechanisms within that. The tool is at, at a sort of a ready to go, ready to use state. And again, thanks to, you know, the work that Peter and Bob and many others have put into this. I'd also have to recognize Greg Johnson and Mike Guzzo, Greg Johnson, new town administrator, and Mike Guzzo, the town's finance director, who've also, who've also worked very proactively to make sure that their, their tools that they're doing dovetail well with our long-range planning tool that we want to use, so.
Yeah, this is the spreadsheet they would use every year, and what they gave to the Board of Selectmen for FY 2020, this just extends it so that we can see it back. So it'll be useful every year from this point forward.
Yeah, and Bob and Peter, I know, and Ken, you've been on basically every board in the, in the town at this point, it feels like.
Not the Board of Selectmen, I wasn't elected to that one.
Oh, shoot, that's right, sorry.
Nice, nice.
Didn't mean to poke at an open wound there.
It's not an open wound. Like I said to my wife, if I win, I win, if I lose, I win, you know, so.
But I guess, I guess the point I'm trying to make is, I'm, I'm one of the more junior board members in the town, and even then, this is year six for me. And starting my first year as a school committee member, we started having conversations of how we needed to start to view the whole thing as one interconnected thing. And, you know, because my first couple of years on the board, we treated it as almost like separate columns, you know, and we all had our fifftoms, for lack of a better term. So the, the progress that we've made in the almost six years that I've been a school committee member has been staggering. The fact that we're having joint subcommittee meetings and we're communicating throughout the year, and we're looking at how all these pieces that you're now graphically representing, you know, interplay with each other is fantastic. And I, I think it's not going to take one bullet to, to fix the problem. We're all going to have to look at our chunks and, you know, clearly, anybody who can read numbers can see that we're the biggest cost driver in this town. So we have our own part to play in it, but thank you for the time and the effort and the energy that you put into creating this tool, making things more transparent, because I'll be the first one to admit I have a really hard time reading spreadsheet. But something that's interactive like this will, will go a long way to helping people without the, without the speciality start to understand the problem a little bit.
And I have to point out, you know, Dawn and Mary's participation on the Budget Subcommittee and the numbers that Michelle and Bob have been putting together to, to do that. You know, last year, the Budget Subcommittee was great. This year, it really is working on all cylinders, and so we're in a much better place to understand. Of course, we're preparing, one of the reasons why we wanted to meet with you tonight is because we're preparing for the February ninth.
Yep.
Joint budget review between the Finance Committee and the Board of Selectmen. And so, you know, this is, this is one more step along the way. So we appreciate your, your all's time and attention, especially with such a long meeting.
Before we move on, any follow up from any other members up here?
I just, I want to make a comment, because Bob and I have been on different committees for many years, seems like longer than thirteen, but you have wanted this for a very long time, to be able to not just deal with the, the year at hand, but to see the cycle and that. So I think this puts us in a lot, I know it does, it puts us in a lot stronger position to be able to see the ripple effects of any decision that, that we made. So thank you for continuing to really push at it.
Yeah, I'm a slow learner, it took me a long time to figure out.
No, 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 it took you a long time to have us, yeah, follow along, so thank you.
Thank you.
Just had a question. Do you think there's any benefit to getting some time at town meeting to give maybe like a ten minute overview? Because I think what I think strikes me the most, like, I love the nitty gritty details, but I can be a nerd like that. I love the idea of town meeting folks actually understanding when they vote for a large project, any large project, what it's going to do for our finances. Because I think what, my experience with town meeting in Maynard is they generally always go up, and we all make great presentations with lots of backing of why you should support something. But I don't think we ever really show what this will show, which is sort of the deferred things, you know, that we might not be doing right away. So anyway, just a thought, I know town meeting can be really legitimate.
Let me, let me just jump in. I think from a, from an explanation perspective, if we get some graphical representations, I don't know that sitting here massaging the numbers in real time would work, but if we got the graphical representations of, here's the baseline, here are the different scenarios, and here how that plays out, and have an explanation going. Now, whether we can get there for this year's town meeting, you know, that's a question mark of thing.
Yes.
I think that's where we definitely want to get to. You may remark that the, the Finance Committee's input on the town meeting was significantly more detailed last year, and Bob, for a number of years now, has put together a, a report that really goes into depth on that. And that's all part of the same effort to increase the amount of understanding and transparency and communication that goes along with this. So I think we'll get there.
Yeah.
Question is just about this year.
Yeah, I mean, this year, if, if we get a warrant article for the building of the fire station, I personally think going through this to understand the funding source and the impact is exactly what we need to do. Now, it still may be premature, it all depends, but.
Right.
But you can't argue with that number, because this, all these numbers are exactly, you know, extended from a baseline of the current fiscal 2020 that the finance director has gone over to.
Yeah. It would just be great to see it whenever you're ready, because I understand the, you know, it's a great idea, but being ready in time is always a challenge. But I would love this to become sort of part of our voter education for town meetings, you know.
Maybe we could do it again with the folks here and say, if we had the graphs and this together, would you kill us if you did it at town meeting? It would be helpful. Maybe.
Actually, we're looking for a couple of people to do the senior project on town's finances.
There you go. Awesome.
It would be a good one.
So February ninth is the.
Town Budget Summit.
All Town Budget Summit, so it's open.
At the library, public library.
Roosevelt Room.
It's at the, it's at the library, yeah.
Yep.
Eight to twelve.
It's eight thirty usually?
Yeah, eight thirty.
There's coffee and a lot of carbohydrates.
Yeah, lots of pastries.
Usually goes till noon.
Was that, was that hope, or was that prediction?
No, I was stretching.
Okay, all right, cool. Anything else?
This is great, thank you.
Thank you very much.
I know it's a lot of work going into it, so this is fantastic.
Oh, I, yeah, there we go.
Yeah.
Kevin.
You got it.
Kevin Cruz.
So I'll, I'll start, Kevin, but come on up, could you help us explain? Oh, yeah, you can go up to the mic. But two years ago, Kevin came before the school committee for approval of a football co-op with AMSA. And every two years, the MIA requires co-op application renewals. Kevin has a deadline before March to make that decision, so we thought we'd bring him to a school committee to get this approved, or for your discussion.
Great.
And possible approval. He, you know, he's recommending that we approve it based on the number of students we have in our program to maintain the program. So that summarizes what you shared with me, Kevin, but I hear here in case they have any other questions. I don't know, you can correct me if I, if that's not a good summary, but.
This is for the combined football team?
Yes.
Just make sure I heard it right.
So I can give you some specific numbers if you want?
Yeah, or if there's any changes in the agreements that are worth noting.
No, it's the same, same agreement. So right now, you know, this, this coming, well, nineteen, twenty year will have, right now, thirty kids, nine through twelve. Seven of those are from AMSA, so we really don't get a huge number, but in football numbers, getting to, getting to thirty is, is huge. We do, anticipate maybe some more signups from the AMSA students. And, you know, so without those seven students, we probably would be reduced to having a varsity only program. And having a varsity only program in the long run isn't, isn't sustainable. So to, to ensure the long-term health of the, of the program, it's really important to, to maintain those two programs, and so that AMSA co-op is really, is real important. So that's basically it. And would like to note, I know that, you know, there's some concern that, you know, especially, you know, it came up that we're losing a lot of kids to, to AMSA, and that they're a competition, but none, as of right now, none of the students that go to AMSA from Maynard are on the football team. So mostly Marlboro student kids.
Just to be fair, clear, they, they would have, I don't see, like, we would still allow them to be on the team.
Oh, right, 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 yeah.
And they certainly have the right.
Right.
Like a larger systemic issue, we would not want to.
They pay an activity fee, just like everybody else.
Great. Well, it sounds like it's pretty well vetted. I'll make a motion unless there's more questions.
We can ask further questions if you'd like to make a motion.
Sure. So I will move that we approve the request for the AMSA football co-op renewal presented by Kevin Caruso.
A second. Discussion.
Well, yeah, I just, and I'm sure that I know the answer to this, but just, at no point do kids from Maynard get hurt because more kids from AMSA participate.
Like playing time, opportunity?
No, or just even being on the team.
No, I mean, it actually, it's beneficial, the more numbers you have, it's beneficial for our, you know, for the team in general, because you, you're able to practice, your practices are more rigorous, and the competition is, is better with more kids, you know, but it's, the number's so small that, you know, while the Maynard kids are still able to participate, and, you know, I think thirty to forty kids is a, is a good number. And so, and there's only a small number of, of kids from AMSA, so it really doesn't, if anything, the, the Maynard kids benefit from having the AMSA kids.
Great, thank you.
Further discussion? All right, hearing none. Motion's been made and seconded. All in favor? Motion passes five zero.
Thanks, Kevin.
Sorry for the long wait.
Yeah, that's okay, it was interesting.
You're too kind. All right, moving on. Dawn and Mary, can you give us a budget subcommittee update, please?
Want to start, me start?
Yeah, I'd like to.
So as Bethland said, we are knee deep in preparations for the February ninth Town School Budget Meeting. So this is required by charter. It's the second Saturday of every February, every year. We get together with the town, the Finance Committee, a number of employees attend, it's open to the public, it's at the Roosevelt Room in the public library at eight thirty, till whenever we drop, usually around noon. So we welcome folks to attend. In past years, it's been known as the day you find out your number from the town, but this year, I don't believe it will be the big reveal, because the new town administrator has sort of a different work, working flow and a working path. So as parts of the budget subcommittee, we've already seen some preliminary numbers that he will recommend to the Board of Selectmen, so if you look at, you won't be able to see it, but I'll try to do a decent job explaining it. So we asked Bob and his team to come up with a budget and a budget number, and if he had his, his way, we would need an eight point seven nine increase from last year. And.
That's a growth budget.
Yep, so that would be to remain.
Competitive.
You know, very competitive, to do really the things on our wish list that have been on the wish list a number of years. Some additional programs and things like that. So that was an eight point seven nine that Bob recommended, and that's his job, you know, to, to speak up for the staff and the students and build a good educational system. And the job of the town administrator is to tell us, to really give us a ballpark, like, ask for level service, because that's more in line with what you might get, and that's his job, and I think he's doing a fantastic job, his communication is off the charts. He recommended we submit, this was back in November, and we've been updating everyone along the way, they recommended we submit a six point oh seven percent increase, and that would have been, I think, just to give you some numbers, a difference of about five hundred thousand dollars. And what has happened in the past is, no matter what, we've always just gone into budget season with a huge gap, and many of you have sat here through some of the really large cut lists, we've looked at so many things, we've cut a lot of things over the years, and we've been really blessed to add them back in slowly. But the town administrator has given us some preliminary positive news that he's going But the town administrator has given us some preliminary positive news that he's going to recommend to the Board of Selectmen, uh, a five point five four percent increase, so not the six point oh seven, but the five point five four. Um, that is a, it's basically six hundred thousand dollars off, give or take change, of what we asked for. And what we asked for being Bob's, I don't want to say dream budget, 'cause it's really not that dreamy, it's adding mental health to Fowler, it's some really great things, um, but it's not like we're building a robotic swing all of a sudden. Um, but still, just a hundred thousand off of level service is probably better than we've started the season, so to speak, even though we all have a very long season.
This will be my sixth budget, and that's the smallest number that I've ever started with.
Exactly, so it doesn't mean we won't still be making changes, right? Because there might be some things that we really need to invest in, so we may make changes. Um, so, you know, we'll be diving into the budget more intricately as a group now. Um, but Greg is the town administrator, he's recommending a five point five four percent increase. He will go into some detail on the town budget on the ninth. Uh, we'll present the school budget and some slides on some, um, what makes up the school budget and our, our things like that. And then from February ninth, we'll meet at some point with the finance committee, and that's really where we get vetted. Um, we do a lot of question, and you, a number of you have done this, um, we will go and we will present, um, or represent, and just really probably hopefully have some good discussion with the finance committee. Um, and from there, uh, until town meeting, really the, well, from February ninth till town meeting, it's the Board of Selectmen's budget. So if any changes, um, come from the numbers, positive or negative, we will hear, we will report back, that's what Mary and I do for, for everyone. But yeah, I just, I'm feeling optimistic, which is a very nice thing to say going into budget season in Maynard, so.
Cool. Follow-up questions? Mary, anything you want to add?
No, I'm just, um, it is early, and some of the numbers that they, that Greg did give us were, um, he's trying to be conservative, and we are hopeful that, for instance, the chapter seventy, um, money will, will be more than what's anticipated, although the first round doesn't look that enticing, but that's why we have Kate, so, Kate Hogan, so, so we are hopeful. As we said earlier, a hundred thousand dollars, we were both walked out of that meeting feeling like breath of fresh air that, um, at least it's, you know, we're, we're in a good place to start, so.
And just a quick review of the governor's budget, which doesn't mean anything, 'cause it's going to change a number of times, but let's say, this is what they did, so, Maynard got an additional twenty seven thousand in chapter seventy, which is school aid. Um, but then on the backside, he dropped our charter tuition reimbursement funds, almost the exact same amount.
I know.
Um, so it's a net zero. So anyway, that's why you see us talking with Kate, you saw, a number of you were here when we spoke with Jamie. Um, there's a lot more line items in the budget, there's a lot more explanation on the budget, including, um, some possible reimbursement for students and pathways, and so we'll see what lasts throughout the budget process at the state. But that's what we do from, from now till then, so it'll be busy, but we'll do our best to keep everyone updated.
Yeah, sure, point of clarification, Bob?
Yeah, um, actually, just really more additional comment about the town administrator. I think, because I was at, present at the meeting, um, I think what was important to see is that, uh, this particular town administrator, maybe a little bit more, is very transparent about the cuts that he made on the town side, that he may want, just like we hope to be able, if we get a little bit of relief on any other of these numbers, to be able to put a little bit back in. And it's not huge numbers, but it's very impactful to the, you know, to the public safety group and, uh, to a couple of other things, so, I think that is a breath of fresh air for all of us to see how we're, we're all trying to, you know, make some cuts so that everybody gets a little bit of the benefit.
Well, and when we started meeting, uh, was it in September, we were, as a town-school combined, I think it was one point two million in the whole.
Yep.
So to, I think that he and his office and his team have done a, a stellar job looking through the budget and making recommendations as well, so.
And some of it, I don't want to call it luck exactly, but the, uh, the health insurance number is quite a bit lower than we usually anticipate.
Fingers crossed.
But there's still, as you said, a little bit of conservative, conservatism built in, so, um, yeah, it's, it's better than a few years past. Anyway, thank you.
Thanks for adding to the conversation. Um, I think it's an opportunity, um, to, to touch on a lot of the points that we started the conversation on tonight. I, I've been in the field of public education for a long time, and I've never seen so much passion around the idea of funding and giving our students what they need. We've always wanted it, but we've always been somewhat more complacent, and I'm, I'm encouraged by the rallying that I see in the members of the associations. I'm ra, I'm encouraged by the advocacy I'm seeing on the parts of families. I'm encouraged by the advocacy that I'm seeing on the part of students that are going to the State House, and I think, Governor Baker starting to address the underlying issues speaks to the political pressure that I think some of our elected officials are starting to, to feel. And I think now more than ever, we need to continue the dialogue, I think tonight was a huge step forward, but the work will continue, because as you heard Kate say earlier in the evening, and we heard Jamie say on December the thirteenth, the budget goes through multiple permutations over the next six to eight months. There's a house budget, there's a senate budget, and they pass their budgets, and then they have to ratify, and, and you know, get the, the budget numbers in alignment and present a final budget, then Baker has light item veto power, or you, you know, there's, there's a lot of moving parts, but if we can continue the conversation and continue the outreach and continue the advocacy, I like the way that the, the trends are going, um, but we need to, we need to keep up the conversation, keep up the pressure. Because the alternative is not something that I want to consider. Bob?
I just wanted, uh, to build, um, on what Bob said, which is, I just really love the communication our new town administrator is providing. After he met with the tribe board and, and the, gave them the important information on the budgets, I know he shared it with me and, and our other department chairs, we all talk, and right away, he wanted to get that information to us, give us a logic as to, you know, how he was trying to, you know, spread the, you know, spread it, and, uh, and I just think that that transparency and his collaboration is really wonderful, so I just wanted to highlight what you said as well. And I am optimistic that if the governor's talking about it now, uh, we really have to push to get the, uh, FBRC, um, recommendations approved, because that's where Maynard will get some money, as Michelle pointed out. You know, some of this other stuff, maybe not, but I, though, that's so important, so I think that really is, you know, speaks to your point, having, uh, our associations and us sign letters of commitment to these, these initiatives is really showing a collaborative effort to try and get the state to fund at least the minimum.
Perfect. Anything else? Okay, um, let's talk about the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty draft calendar, please.
So, uh, at the last meeting, we gave you a draft calendar, um, and there was concern about the, uh, January seventeenth early release date. We went back to the professional development group, because, uh, one recommendation was to consider December ninth, 'cause we know the WAVM telethon, that is always that weekend. But that really didn't work based on the embedded professional development, so we, we did, in this newest version, move January seventeenth to March thirteenth. We'll still continue to allow the WAVM kids, uh, some flexibility as far as after the, the telethon, because we have great staff who are, you know, they understand. So we've always done that anyway, but, so the, the only change to what you saw the last time was January seventeenth to March thirteenth, but once we get this approved, then we can start doing some of that proactive communication about the events for upcoming years. The other thing is, uh, the school committee at the last meeting requested some updates on the events for the rest of the year, and you have a preliminary information in your packets, but that's only preliminary, that was just, those are quick drafts. Um, we will be getting, uh, we'll, I'll be working on figuring out how we get that information on the website so that our community can see the upcoming events for at least the rest of the year. And then once we have this, this, uh, the dates for the calendar approved, then the principals of Illinois and I can work on all the events in the upcoming year. So if, uh, you know, I, I would hope we could approve this calendar and get working on all that, uh, positive, uh, communication, proactive communication on the wonderful events we have for the rest of the year, and then the upcoming year.
I have a question, um, Bob.
Yep.
So this, this past, I think it was this past, I think it was this past week where, um, the high school had midterms.
Mm-hmm.
Um, and last, I think it was last Friday, um, my son told me that he had a half-day, but it wasn't on the calendar, and so there was a little bit of miscommunication about whether or not the, the high school actually had a half-day.
Alright.
Um, so I'm just, I'm just wondering whether or not that, um, whether or not that's going to be an issue with this calendar. And I don't know if, if it had to do with the midterms, but he made it sound like the afternoon was for, for kids that needed to make up, because they had missed, so maybe it was actually a full day, but it wasn't for kids that, so.
Had the makeups.
It was very confusing to me, um.
I think it was changed after the fact, and unfortunately, it wasn't communicated. So I will check with the high school to make sure that that's, if it needs to be updated, we'll bring it forward and get it updated, to make sure that's communicated for the upcoming year.
Thank you.
I'll, I'll make a note to check with high school.
So, I will motion to approve the dates for the twenty nineteen, twenty twenty school calendar as currently proposed.
Second? One of our dreams is to have an update for all the students. I don't know.
Yeah, right now, we're doing transitions.
Mm-hmm, for transitions at this point.
Actually, I, I didn't see anything from Green Meadow going up to the middle school. Am I missing it?
They do, you're missing, again, this is preliminary, uh, we just, uh, Colleen asked the principals of Illinois to put together these lists.
So should we, Drew, um, Bob, if we think something is missing, should we email you and you can follow up?
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, well, I'll email Colleen.
Like the midterms and the-
Colleen was connected, well, I'll be working with you on those.
And I know they don't go on necessarily the main calendar, but it's these, um, the drafts. So if you'd like input on the drafts, we're happy to send it.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think ultimately, the goal that I would have, would have, to have the school calendar available, but also building specifically.
Absolutely, yeah, definitely.
Which I think this is a huge step towards, so.
Yep.
Well, I've been also working with Stephen as to where it's appropriate to make sure these events are listed, 'cause on the new website, you have the scrolling a week at a glance type of thing.
Yeah.
Um, and do we have everything on the, the, the homepage or not, and so he's more adept at web, web design, so I'm going to lean on him a little bit, but certainly, uh, Dawn, as Dawn mentioned, anybody who has ideas on how we can do that, I'd love to work with you on that, so we want to, we want to get this information out every possible way we can. Communication is our goal this year.
Any further discussion?
Well, actually, I did see on the, um, for the Green Meadow going up to the middle school, it is listed on, on, um, Fowler, but it's, it's not listed on the Green Meadow. It's also, it's, it's more just, yeah.
It's a matter of getting the three of them in the same room and coordinating it.
Crosswalking.
Yeah.
Important thing is that they are.
Alright, motion's been made and seconded, all in favor of the twenty nineteen, twenty school year calendar as currently proposed. Motion passes five zero, thank you. Citizens' comments?
Can I just say before Natasha gets up too, thank you to everybody for staying the entire meeting, you know, the finance and, and everything, I really appreciate myself when people stay the entire meeting rather than just a piece of it, so, thank you. I know people have different commitments and that, but I, for one, really appreciate it, so.
I feel like we should have snacks for you all when you stay this long.
Yeah, I know.
Or booze, you know, booze is okay.
Something.
Hi Natasha, again?
Yes.
What's on your mind?
So I wanted to just ask a couple of questions about the subcommittee, uh, budget subcommittee update.
Oh, sure.
Um, so, is it accurately, if I surmise, if someone's asking for the school council, that the five point five four percent, that's a soft number, that was recommended?
Yep, that's where we're at right now.
Okay, so that's a soft number, and, and from what I heard, the, um, big reveal, that's probably not going to change much, though, right? There not going to be like a big reveal, or do you expect that to possibly go up or maybe down?
Technically, so technically, it's Greg Johnson's, um, budget until February ninth, I believe I have that right.
This is his first year?
If he could change it, you know, I mean, if he, you know, generally, it's us that gets last-minute, um, news that changes things dramatically, but if, if Greg gets some, some news between now and then, he certainly is within his rights. So, you know, we certainly want to provide updates as to where things are, um, but I definitely want to represent it as a, uh, work in progress. And it really, honestly, it, until the voters vote in May, it's, it's fluid. You know, there are towns that voters, um, create warrant articles of their own, or they get up and, um, more correctly, they amend them on the floor.
Yes.
So it's hard, it's hard.
Yeah, but just, if, all things equal and non-changing, the soft number-
I think getting back to the root of your question, yes, that is the number as it currently stands, but I think, to clarify, Dawn said
It could fluctuate.
That that's an entry point in the conversation.
Okay, okay, but you're, and I guess what I'm wondering is, since I know he's new this year, um, and it sounds like there have been very productive conversations with him, it doesn't seem like there'd be a lot of surprises.
No, the surprise would be, you know, let's, so he's using a certain number, and this isn't, um, anything I can't share, this is public information. He's using a certain number to gauge employee healthcare costs for next year, and that's one of his, and really ours, 'cause we actually have the number of the most employees.
Right.
That's our biggest, that's their version of special ed, right, of, of the most fluctuation you can not anticipate. Um, so if he speaks to his insurance reps and they give him a guesstimate, they still aren't even promising him yet, but there's been times we've gone into that, um, time period where the insurance person has said, plan for at least a ten percent increase. So this year, and I don't want to quote the number, but Bob, you might recall, or Mary, I want to say it's almost half of that, is what he said. But, you know, I don't know the intricacies of the insurance and, and if it could change between now in February or now in May. My guess is it, it could, um, but yeah, so it's hard, 'cause we're all in this, you know, in this sort of-
I got just one more one, that, um, he needs to provide a certain date of course, like, a balanced budget. So up until that time, you know, we have requests, we have
Movement.
First, from all departments, and he has to get that to balance, and he has to make some tough decisions to do, and it can really force selectmen.
Exactly.
That's right.
And we have to moderate as we see any changes come after that. But it's the first, as of last week, the first balanced budget we're putting forward for, for our twenty twenty twelve.
Okay, that's, yeah, it is helpful, thank you. Just to, another piece of that, the a hundred thousand dollars for the roofing, that, the ask, um, how does that factor into this, or does it?
Separate.
Good.
Oh, sorry, um, Dawn, you, but you're living it, I mean, the way I heard you describe it, and please clarify, we have our budget, but then you and both Erin reiterated that the hundred thousand dollars for the roof at GM would be a separate warrant article.
Separate ask.
Yeah, I don't know if you remember that, um, every year, we have a free cash talk
Yeah.
discussion, um, at town meeting, or there's a proposal, so this year, I think the number, uh, for free cash is two point one million.
Okay.
And the town administrator has put forth a preliminary proposal of what he's going to present to the selectmen, and I believe one of the line items says a hundred thousand dollars for the Green Meadow roof repairs. But that's going, you know, so the next step there is, assuming it stays on Greg's free cash proposal, he would present it to the selectmen, um, and, 'cause they're the ones that are going to really have the hands in drafting the warrant article. So there still could be discussions at that point.
Okay.
Up until the warrant article is signed, sealed, and
So it's likely not to count, I guess, against, if I was, you know, from looking in, a concerned employee of the district,
Yep.
that, that getting that funding would reduce our budget, maybe would affect staffing levels or anything.
Right, 'cause our budget, our budget that we talk about all the time is an operating budget.
Right.
It's really what we need to open the doors, whereas a hundred thousand dollar one-time fee, um, is a capital cost. So if it's not in the capital plan that goes out ten years, there are some things that creep up, right? I don't know where this one falls, I, I feel like we, we keep patching it, 'cause it's old. But yeah, so we're going to be asking it for, for it in terms of it being a one-time capital expense.
Okay, alright, thank you so much.
Separate from the operator.
Thank you.
Okay, citizens' comment, or members' comments and questions, excuse me. Um, who would like to start us off? Go ahead, Mary.
No, I said I get nothing.
Really?
We talked about a lot of that, though.
And I say that with admiration, because you have your fingers in so many pies, you usually have a running list.
You do, you have something from Middlesex.
Oh, I broke it.
Oh, well, yeah, but this wasn't related to schools, but.
It's still good news.
Oh, it's still great news, uh, food pantry-related, um, the Middlesex Savings Bank, well, first of all, last year, they gave the, all the education foundations in their district fifty thousand dollars, so, under the education foundation, we received that. Today, I was fortunate to go to Middlesex Savings, because they gave all of the food pantries in their district twenty thousand dollars each. All of the friend, all the libraries in their district, fifteen thousand dollars each.
Oh, my gosh.
And all of the senior centers in their district, twenty, oh, was it another twenty thousand? And anyway, they, they gave huge, huge amounts of money, so we were all
That's a massive outlay of cash.
Able to come and, and, you know, pick up a check today, so.
That's amazing.
But this is school-related, so, under the, um, the wellness, oh dear, oh, I do have it here. So under the wellness committee, we're doing this year, it's the fourth annual for the state, um, but you may have seen an article in the Action Unlimited, for the elementary and the middle school, we're going to have a winter walk and roll to school day on next Wednesday, on Wednesday, February sixth, unless it snows. Students will be dropped off on, from the buses, um, to, um, the Boys and Girls Club, and they'll all walk to school to, um, you know, physical fitness and, um, awareness and that kind of thing, so, um, I know that, looking for volunteers, parent volunteers, um, to help as well as staff, if, if staff are-
And just to add, it's a walk and roll, because we're inclusive of all students.
That's exactly right.
Oh, nice.
Yes, exactly, so it should be, it's very exciting.
Is it snow or shine?
No, unfortunately, if it's a, you know, yeah, I don't, I'm not sure what we'll do in that case, but it's part of the safe routes to school, um.
It's a statewide event, yeah.
So what about, what about for kids that already walk? They show up at the Boys and Girls Club?
Actually, and from what I'm told, um, and more details will be sent out, but from what I'm told, the kids are actually, when they get off the buses, or if they, if their parents are dropping them off and that too, they'll all stop by being inside the Boys and Girls Club. And then, um, the elementary school kids will walk, or I guess the Fowler will walk first, 'cause they show up early, and then the, um, elementary school, so.
So any walkers that want to participate?
Yeah, the details are still being worked out. The details are being worked out.
The details are still being worked out, we, we had a meeting, actually, they had a meeting today, but, um.
How early can we drop them off?
I know, really. And there's also arrangements being made for, um, students that have, um, disability, you know, physical disabilities and that, so that it is all-inclusive, so it's pretty exciting.
Cool.
That's it.
Dawn, Mauro? Bethland?
I do have just a few things.
Okay. Filling in for Mary tonight?
And I, I often, I could not fill in for Mary. One, she was just at the CPC meeting last night with Erin, I know, 'cause my husband was sitting behind you.
Yes, I know he was.
So I got all the dirt, I didn't tell you, but, um, so she is tirelessly trying to write, at this point, look at ways to get the bleachers funded for the Maynard High School, so, um, we were just very grateful for your efforts there, and for Erin's efforts as well.
Erin is amazing.
So, um, also, um, bullying was brought up tonight by Kate Hogan, but I do think that, um, that is just an important thing that we're going to start, um, we're hearing bits about, and it's just very, it's just something we, we, I wanted to mention, because I feel like we're, um, and we're going to start looking at- I feel like we're, um, and we're going to start looking at, we just had, um, another policies subcommittee meeting, we're looking at when we're going to do our next curriculum committee meeting, and just starting to understand what's happening in bullying around that. We just updated policies and, um, did a bunch of things last year to try to make things clearer, to help with the pathway for, um, reporting bullying, but more to be done, clearly, just such a big issue. Um, and then, I think now is when people have started to say, um, you know, families that are, put their hat in the ring for other, for other charter schools, et cetera?
Well, I mean, I know that the application deadline, um, or window, and I think the deadline is already passed for applying for AMSA.
Yeah.
Was very recently, but I don't know, we don't actively collect information on families that have applied, um, or ultimately are accepted.
Is there some way in which we had before, said, we reach out to the families themselves before they have to make their decision to be able to have those conversations?
I'd say, any, Colleen, do you remind me, do we have the list, or did I put it on my blog and say, any parents who would like to come and talk to me? I can't remember.
In the past, we, we haven't done it that way. In the past, we get the information from the office when the parent comes in and, and tells them they're going to AMSA. Then I get all the names and we, I email all them.
Yeah, there was something we did, Dawn, you and I worked on this last year, where there was something that we had, we...
Yeah, Bob, um, Bob sent, um, specific emails to specific grades, right? Like, so, grade five going into six, I think, is AMSA. Um, so Bob reached out and basically just said, hey, as you're considering your options, I'm obviously paraphrasing, um, you know, if you have any questions, I would love to, to speak with you. So he's, you know, I think he's doing a good job with outreach, but I think we should repeat that step.
Yeah, yeah.
So Bob, I'm sure that's on your calendar, hopefully.
Yeah, that's, that was just something I wanted to mention, I'm sure that's on your radar, but just, um, mention it, because it was on my mind, too.
Yeah, but like a specific, to a specific grade, I don't think that needs to go on the front page of the website, that seems odd.
Yeah, yeah, that's what I think is what we were trying to target a little bit.
Yeah.
So it was a little more efficient to be correct, targeted, that's it.
Cool. Um, I would like to start a dialogue, Bob, um, about joining up with the Fund Our Future campaign. As, um, as a district, as a school group, we have, we have signed a letter of support for the Foundation Budget Review Commission, um, the implementation of that plan. Our associations are on board with that process. Um, however, in the town that I teach in upcoming, they have a Fund Our Future Night, where representatives of the schools, representative of family members, students, anyone who has a hat in the, or, you know, a hat in the game, um, can come out and have, uh, a conversation and learn more about, first, the fund, the Foundation Budget Review Recommendations, um, the, the funding crisis in our public schools. Um, and it's, it's organized primarily through the district, the associations, and members of the, the group Fund Our Future, um, which is a political action camp, uh, group. And I, I would like to have a conversation about the possibility of perhaps hosting an event, maybe in conjunction with one of our neighboring school districts.
Oh, cool.
Um, reaching out to perhaps Hudson or Stowe, um, you know, other communities that are, um, represented by Jamie and Kate, um, because we've had the opportunity, as a small community, to have an audience with them, but I think a larger event, getting more word out, more community involvement, will continue the positive steps that I think we're feeling and we're seeing in some small way.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I don't want to add another major thing to the calendar, but I think it's more than worth the time and the effort if we could pull something together. So I guess what I'm asking is, would you be willing to reach out?
Absolutely.